Good morning, and welcome to the April 15th meeting of the Sedgwick County Commission. I'm Van Williams with Sedgwick County Communications. Thank you for joining us this morning. Sedgwick County remains under a stay-at-home order during the coronavirus pandemic. To prevent the spread of COVID-19, please frequently wash hands with soap and water, use hand sanitizer if soap and water are not available, cover your coughs and sneezes, and when you must leave your home, practice social distancing by keeping six feet between you and others at all times. Please stay updated on COVID-19 news by visiting the Sedgwick County website. You'll find a wealth of COVID-19 information there, including a new COVID-19 dashboard that provides quick data such as confirmed case counts and the number of recovered cases. Today's agenda items include a COVID-19 update from Health Director Adrian Byrne and a report on proposed staff furloughs. Good morning Commissioners and Chairman Pete Meisner.
Good morning, everybody. Good morning, Van. And good morning fellow Commissioners. Welcome to the Wednesday meeting, Wednesday, April 15th meeting. With that, I'll call the meeting to order. We will start with invocation, which would be a moment of silence followed by a flag salute. So please join me for a moment of silence and invocation. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Roll call. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Chairman Meisner.
Present. Commissioner, you've received a number of public agenda comments from the public. I reviewed them all. I don't know if any of them, anybody wants to point anything out or we receive and file?
Mr. Chairman, I've reviewed each and every one of those and moved to receive and file.
Second.
Been a motion to receive and file on all the public comments? Any other comment? Being done. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meisner.
Aye. And there's one more item in the public agenda that I'd like to point out, a special point out, is that we received notice that one of our own, Lisa Corr, has been selected as an honoree for the 2020 Administrative Excellence Award. The official announcement from the Business Journal will be coming out next week or so, or next couple weeks, but normally we would have her here and congratulate. If she wants, we can honor her to just say hi and give her, at this point, a cheer. But Lisa does a great job and has been here for two or three years. Plus a zero in there somewhere. Anyway, let's see if she comes in. Hey, Lisa. Recognizing you that you've been awarded the 2020 Administrative Excellence Award from the Business Journal that'll be coming out officially next week. You were nominated.
I didn't know about this. I'm sorry. Oh, my gosh. What an honor.
You were nominated and rightly deserved, and I'm glad that they put you in there with the group of other excellent award winners for Administrative Excellence Awards. So we want to personally thank you. In a different environment, we'd have a more formal world, but it's a different world right now. So.
Thank you so much.
I don't know if any other.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I had no idea.
We couldn't do our jobs without you and Carol. You're our lifeline.
Thank you. I feel like we need to share that honor because it's total teamwork.
Right. There's our announcement.
Thank you very much. Thank all of you. Appreciative. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Lisa. Now get back to work. Okay. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, Special Meeting Minutes of March 20th, 2020.
If it's all right with the, with the Commission, I'd like to combine the minutes of A and B together. If you've all had a chance to review them, and I think they have. So any other notes or comments about those?
Move to approve. Second.
Motion to approve the minutes of items A and B, March 20th and 23rd. Any other comments, motion and second? So Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meisner.
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
New business. Item C, Sedgwick County Health Department update on COVID-19.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, I think at the beginning of the meeting, we need to announce the public comments and how we're going to conduct the executive session, too.
Mr. Papoun, I apologize for.
That's okay.
A lot of stuff was coming out of.
In accordance with a directive by the Attorney General with the new meetings format that's being used all around the state, he is directing that governmental bodies indicate at the beginning of the meeting how public comment is to be received, and I think the manager can comment on that and how, or if you're having an executive session, how you're going to conduct that. And we are scheduled to have an executive session today. We are going to conduct that in this meeting room and not move from it. Just turn off all the phones and other media devices that would allow outside persons to look in during that recess period, so.
And then Chairman, the only thing I'd add to that is that the public comment, of course, in this environment is difficult. So what we will continue to do is allow the public to send emails in to you all, make them part of the public record. So unfortunately, in this time, we'll probably be a weak lag on that. So what Adrian talks about today, what we talk about with other items, we will get, we will receive public comment on that, and then next week at that meeting, you will have those emails, and we will make that part of the record.
Okay, thank you. And we're in contact with, with our friends at Johnson County, and they're working through, they're doing Zoom meetings and trying to figure out how to do public comment. It's hard to do on an act, on a new business item. And so we're all working through this as long as we're abiding by, with Mr. Papoun's confirmation and from the legal side, then we're proceeding. So we will note that at the beginning of each meeting. I'm sorry. So thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Okay. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item C, Sedgwick County Health Department update on COVID-19.
Good morning Commissioners and Board of Health. Adrian Byrne, Health Director. So as reported by John Hopkins, Kansas has 1,441 cases of COVID-19, and here in Sedgwick County, we have a total of 206 cases of this moment. Of those 206 cases, 83 people have recovered and three people have died. A person is considered recovered from COVID-19 seven days from the time their symptoms begin, or three days after the symptoms are gone without the use of any fever or pain reliever, whichever of those are longer. So KDHE reports that more than 1,400 Sedgwick County residents have been tested for COVID-19, and we at the Health Department have sampled over 270. We are ready to test over 100 each day at the Health Department. Just need to have swabs to be able to do that. But our State Health Department has said that they will be, have, they've committed to send us 250 kits each week so that as long as we have residents calling in, then we're going to be able to get samples from them and have them tested. And the criteria thankfully has loosened somewhat so that residents don't have to be over the age of 60 anymore. So that will open it up quite a bit. Residents only need to have two symptoms to be considered for testing. So again, they do not have to be over the age of 60, and the symptoms have always been fever of 104, 100.4 or above, and a cough, or shortness of breathing. Oftentimes, a shortness of breathing doesn't occur until it's more progressed in the illness or someone that already has pre-existing conditions. So really, if someone has respiratory symptoms, anyone just needs to call United Way 211, and they will take them through preliminary screening. And then if they meet that criteria, and again, it's much looser, so we hope to be able to schedule many appointments every day at our West Central location. Now, we had been analyzing alternative locations for a drive-through site, but decided that our clinic at our West Central location would serve the drive-through and the number of people that we're able to sample, take samples from on a daily basis. And we actually could do more than 100, but because of the limited amount of samples, swabs in particular, we want to space that out just, just a little bit throughout the week. But they have committed to sending us 250 test kits for weeks, weeks to come. So we are still experiencing a shortage of swabs. So besides the 250 that we'll have from our State Health Department, we are, we do have a contract with Quest. There's a little bit more of a process and paperwork to go through even than the state, which is surprising. But we do have, we received 75 swabs from Quest, and we expect to be able, it's probably, it's more of a thing with a commercial lab locally, that they will give you what you've returned to them. So if we use 10 of their sample kits that they've sent us, then they'll then reimburse for those 10. So we are working with a, to produce a data dashboard on our website, and in the interim, we have begun to place a lot more information on Sedgwick County website about COVID-19, on the COVID-19 page. That is my update for today.
Okay. Well, it's a positive step on getting test kits and communication with Quest to do more.
Mr. Chairman, I might just mention, and I should have mentioned before Adrian started, we do have other reports as part of this item. Tim Kaufman will get up and also maybe talk a little bit more in-depth about testing acquisition and top of what Adrian's already covered. And Rusty Leeds is on, will be on the phone regarding PPE acquisition. And as soon as, as soon as you're finished with Adrian, we'll have Justin come up and kind of discuss about the status of orders.
Okay. That'd be very helpful. Okay. Any questions?
The 250 kits, is that a day, a week, a month?
Per, per week. So they're going to send us 250 per week, and we've averaged around 200, but haven't known that we could always count on having that, that amount. So now that we know that we can count on having at least 250 from KDHE, then we're going to ramp it up and test as many as we can a day.
How can we do 100 a day if we only get 250 a week?
Well, we also have some swabs from Quest, and so we can test up to 100 a day, but it may not be 100. To this point, we've tested whoever has met criteria, and there's not been, it's been under 25 per day. So I'm hoping that we can get more, more people in. And if we need to, then we'll look at going possibly Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, we have found is not the best time to have our drive-through because there's problems with the courier getting the samples to KDHE. So we know Monday through Thursday is a sure thing of them being sent that day.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Yeah, Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. Do we have, are we just currently only testing at the West Central location?
As far as the Health Department, yes. There's several other. We're a very small piece of the amount of testing that's occurring in the community.
So do we have, what's the data that you're going to be providing soon as far as age, race, gender of those who are being tested?
All of that.
And when, and that will be, when will that data be ready, I guess?
The goal is this week to have all of that data on our website.
Have we considered opening the Health Department up at, like, Ninth Street to have any testing there? Are we doing testing there?
No. But in the very beginning, we had some people walking in before the stay-at-home order and would have people take the samples. We don't, there's a lot of, there's a pretty big process that goes along with sampling sites, with the PPE, and at this point, we wouldn't have the, really, the staff to do both sites, and I'm not sure that we really would need to. Our clinic has always been at West Central, and we provide, and still provide immunizations, family planning. It's, we're providing it differently, but we haven't had, haven't heard of anyone struggling historically to get to West Central for our services.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, I have one more question. So in light of the senior living situation, the reports that came out yesterday, how are we ensuring that, or what sort of support would senior living residences need as far as PPE, or if they have cases isolating? How are they handling home health and hospice aides that are coming in and out of the building in multiple buildings around the city? How, can we, can you just talk to that?
And we have, part of our outreach team provided the information from CDC and KDHE to all of our long-term care facilities in the last two, three weeks. And most of them already have a response plan established. It's just that it's, seeing it through in real life is, can be a little bit different than having it on paper. But part of what we always do, and we've had clusters or outbreaks at nursing homes before, such as norovirus, that's, that's usually a pretty big one. People refer to that as the stomach flu, and it spreads incredibly fast and possibly a little bit more quicker than, quickly than COVID-19 even. So in those cases, just like with COVID-19, we contact the person and find out who all they have, they have had contact with, and if the nursing home is able to, that it's recommended that they quarantine or isolate whichever, whether they're, if there's a lot of exposures that aren't sick, then we would recommend that they, they quarantine those contacts on one part of the ward from the other. And the same thing with social isolation. Most nursing homes have even instituted a very strict stay-in-your-room prior to the stay-at-home order, just because they've experienced outbreaks and how quickly they, they can occur. So they, they do have some personal protective equipment, and Sedgwick County has helped them with some because they are low, like everybody else, as far as even surgical masks and gloves. And so we have been working to respond to some of their needs as well. And so people that are ill do have the masks on. I believe all staff in that facility, in those facilities have, have at least, have surgical masks on, and we're, we are available to them to provide guidance.
So if someone needed PPE, would they just call the Health Department?
They would go through John Jarvis.
Good.
Okay. And my, oh, I showed off. Thank you. So Adrian, I know we were on some emails yesterday, but I had a doctor in Clearwater that was upset because he didn't know that there was a cluster there. So Shawnee County, and I sent to the manager last night, they notify healthcare providers if there's a cluster in their area. Is that something we can do so that these doctors are at least on notice?
I'd have to check with KDHE on that because that's not something that really, that's one of the other historical things, and things are morphing and changing as we go, that has been done. In Sedgwick County, there would be so many physicians or clinics to reach out to, and we already, we're still in a shortage of volunteers and bodies to do certain things. That would be a whole new massive unit and amount of people that we would have to do. If it was, and did you say he wanted, if there was a cluster? Yeah. Or, okay. So I, we may, from this point going forward, particularly yesterday, we were able to call the nursing home and ask if they wanted to do a joint press release versus us just providing. And they were more than happy and really preferred that so that they could focus on their patient care and that we could field all of the questions that might come from the media. And so that, you know, would at least be a positive process for us moving forward, and then it's already in the media.
Okay. Well, I think the manager's going to look at the Shawnee County model potentially, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just to see if that's something we can, we can do. So, thank you. Mr. Chairman. Yes.
One thing you just said concerns me a little bit, and you said that you don't have the bodies to do the work that you need to do. One of the things on our agenda today is furlough. I don't, I don't, I can't balance the two if we're going to furlough people, and you say you don't have bodies to do work. I guess I'm very confused with your statement.
It's not necessarily Sedgwick County employees that we're furloughing. There, I believe there's two or three that are requesting, but it's, we're, we're using our, our employees either for the COVID-19.
But we have other employees that we're going to furlough.
We've reached out. We've reached out.
Commissioner Dennis, that's a good question, and if we could wait till the furlough part of the policy, I'll address that then. Or I could, I could talk about it now if you want.
Well, if Adrian says she doesn't have the people that she needs to do the work, we need to address that now.
Okay. So the, the furlough policy that we'll roll out, next item, has a number of voluntary furloughs that we have to now, and that's if the board approves this plan, that we would have to vet between now and Friday and see who could leave and who could not, who could furlough and who could not. We have to make a management decision on that yet. Her needs, and we've talked about this a number of times, her needs for what she wants is a priority for the organization. So some people may not be allowed to furlough if we can fill gaps in Adrian's business process up there, including anything new that she feels like she needs staff for. So we will factor all that in, and even if we move forward with furloughs, we have the right as an organization to call employees back in off of furlough to fill gaps for her. The challenge that I see is some of her, and I've just actually got the list yesterday, some of what she is wanting is forward-facing, client-touching kinds of positions, which may or may not fit a skillset by a county employee, that she may need to go outside and literally hire some of those kinds of positions. Some of the City of Wichita people who have the skills and capacity, Mr. Layton offered those up a couple of weeks ago, we're going to implement them into her work environment as well. And many employees, just to be frank with you, I think many employees don't necessarily choose or want to work in the Health Department if there is potential exposure. So we're working through all that. But to answer your question, we're going to, we try to balance this as we move forward. And whether the Commission wants to move forward with a furlough policy or not, we have to run this organization. And the Health Department and other emergency services right now are priorities. So we reserve the right clearly to move people from job A to job B to better serve the organization. And we also reserve the right to call people in off of furlough to help Adrian if that's, if we have employees that have that skillset and capacity.
Okay. Well, it just concerns me. One of, one of our directors say they don't have people.
Okay. And please give my compliments to the, on Sunday, and the Eagle was the, your Director of Investigations, Werner, I can't remember what her name was.
Keely Hervey.
Yeah. She did a nice job explaining, I thought it was a very thorough job of explaining how they contact, how that process goes. Please give her my compliments that that was a, I've referred a number of people to that article, and she did a nice job. So, thank you. All right. Next up is Mr. Justin. Thanks again, Adrian. Justin, welcome to the meeting.
Thank you, Chairman. Good morning Commissioners. Justin Waggoner, Assistant County Counselor. And I was just going to talk about, really, about three different executive order items from the Governor's Office and kind of give some, somewhat of an update on those items. First, I was just going to talk about the Governor's Executive Order 20-18, which is the Public Gatherings Executive Order that was the subject of some litigation at the Kansas Supreme Court over the weekend. This is a reminder, it rescinded her prior executive order 20-14. The most noteworthy change was that 20-18 applied to religious gatherings as well. It removed the exemption that previously existed in 20-14. Last week, the Kansas Attorney General advised law enforcement not to enforce it as a criminal matter with regard to any religious activities because it was his opinion that that would violate the Kansas Constitution. Then shortly after that, it's worth noting that under state law, the Kansas Legislature has the power to essentially revoke a, an executive order that a governor issues during a state of emergency. The, what the legislature, of course, they have not been convenient to PICA because of COVID-19. What they had passed several weeks ago was a joint resolution between the House and Senate there that essentially delegated some powers and set up a framework for how they could revoke an executive order. Really, the issue, the only issue that was really decided on Saturday by the Kansas Supreme Court is a pretty narrow one. There was, there was a process and a step that before the Legislative Coordinating Council would make a decision on this, it would have to be run by the State Finance Council. In this case, it never went through the State Finance Council before the Legislative Coordinating Council met. And so therefore, the LCC's decision, the Supreme Court, in a unanimous decision, either joining in the opinion or concurring with it, was that the LCC didn't have the ability to act on behalf of the legislature in this situation because some of those steps, that one step hadn't been taken. The end result is that Executive Order 20-18 is still in effect until May 1st. And I'd be happy to stand for any questions on that, but if not, I'll move on to the second item that I had. It'd be Governor Kelly's Stay-at-Home Order 20-16. That's currently scheduled to conclude on April 13th, or sorry, April 19th, April 19th, my apologies. Earlier this week, Governor Kelly did say that she anticipates extending that. She didn't give any details on how much she would extend it or when she would announce that. I think I read a media article that indicated there may be an announcement as early as today, so we'll certainly keep you up to date. If we hear anything on that, I'm sure you'll, you'll hear about that if it happens. But for now, it's effective through April 19th. The county's Stay-at-Home Order, Dr. Menz's, order on that is still effective through April 23rd. So if, if the governor takes no action, Dr. Menz's order would still be in place through the 23rd. The third and last thing I want to mention has to do with Executive Order 20-10. That's the one that has to do with, that prohibits new evictions and foreclosure cases being filed. I know Mike Papoun wanted me to mention this one briefly to, to all of you because I think you've all fielded questions from constituents, whether landlords or tenants, or people who might be going through foreclosures. It's not to provide legal advice to anyone in the public, and I'd certainly stress that if there is a landlord or tenant who's going through this situation, that there is certainly some uncertainty here with what this does, that they would want to get talked to their own legal counsel. But I'll just briefly describe what the executive order says. Prevents, it rescinded Executive Order 20-06, which had been a few weeks earlier than that. It prevents new residential evictions and residential foreclosures when all the defaults or violations of a lease agreement or mortgage agreement are substantially caused by financial hardship resulting from the COVID-19 pandemic. And so, you know, it doesn't apply to a commercial lease. It doesn't apply to a commercial mortgage, but only residential leases and mortgages. And if it, you know, if, if one of those cases had been filed before March 23rd, which was the date I understand it became effective, and my understanding is, at least that's the date it was signed by the Governor's Office and Secretary of State, then those can continue. So if somebody, if a landlord, for example, filed on March 20th, I think they're within their rights probably to continue, but if it was after March 23rd, then they would not be able to file a new case under that executive order. The order goes on to define what financial hardship means, and it says, "When individual or family suffers a significant loss of income, significant increase in necessary expenses, or an inability to work as a direct or indirect result of the COVID-19 pandemic." This order stated to last through May 1st. You know, I, I would add that I don't, I didn't see anything in the executive order that actually removes the obligation on a, somebody paying a mortgage or a tenant to actually pay their rent. It appears to just remove the ability for them during the state of disaster to be evicted or essentially kicked out of their, their residence, or to have a foreclosure action filed against them. So I think at the, it does have some language, some guidance that it kind of suggests to landlords, tenants, lenders, and borrowers that they try to work things out after this disaster's over. It's not binding on anyone, but it's recognizing, I think, that the, the financial obligation is still going to be there, and this, this executive order doesn't remove that. And I would be happy to answer any questions on any, all three of those items.
Well, I'll start by just saying thank you. That, because there has, I think most of the public understands these, these stay-at-home and public gathering things, but I think it's clear that, it helps clear that there are two, there's a public gathering order and a stay-at-home order from the, from the Governor, and then there's the county order that encompasses everything.
That's correct, Chairman.
So key dates are the 17th, or the 19th, I'm sorry, April 17. So, key dates are the 17th, or the 19th, I'm sorry, April 19th on the governor's stay-at-home. May 1st has been extended on the public gathering.
That's correct.
For the governor. And in, in between there, if something happens where April 19th expires, then the Cedric County, Dr. Menz's stay-at-home order is in effect till the 23rd, which encompasses both. Okay. And then thanks for clearing up the eviction and, because that, we've all had some, thank you on that.
You're welcome.
That's helpful, and I think it's worth noting for all of us that we can make note of which, which executive orders those are that do that. Okay, that, that's my comment, but now I'll open up to any of the commissioners, want to, questions?
One, one thing that you said to me in an email was, it doesn't mean that people can't threaten eviction. So that's, you know, I had a, a question from a lady, and I, I think that was important to note because people still will probably threaten to do it, but it's not lawful until May 1st.
Yeah, and I think that's, I mean, that, you bring up a good point there, is that I think you could have a landlord who would still say, "If you don't do this, you know, we will evict you." There, there's a lot of factual, it's going to be a case-by-case basis, so you know, if you go through that, you know, in terms of, is that tenant impacted by COVID-19 or not? You know, some households financially haven't been, some certainly have been, and so, but you're right that, you know, the ability to just, for a landlord to across the board evict anyone who doesn't pay, I, I would think, assuming executive, you know, order, that executive order applies, that's not going to be the case. I mean, there's going to be some cases where they would, just wouldn't be able to evict someone for that timeframe. And I'm, again, that's, that's right now. I haven't heard any court decisions that have borne out how that applies, but I, I think you're, you're right in terms of a landlord could make a notice for payment and things like that. And so, you know, that's, that's part of the reason I mentioned at the start of that, that I would urge, whether it's landlords, tenants, whoever it may be, to talk to legal counsel for their specific case because, I mean, that's, each one's going to be different.
More than likely, people who are being threatened to be evicted aren't going to have the funds to seek legal counsel.
Yeah, and I think that's a good point. You know, I do know that, you know, essentially the legal aid, Kansas Legal Services, I'm, as far as I understand, I think they're still operating probably in a remote capacity, but someone like that may be an avenue that if somebody's in that situation where they can't, because attorneys aren't cheap, you know? And so, if, if they're in a situation where their income is impacted, but reaching out to Kansas Legal Services may be a good avenue, that's certainly, if somebody meets the, the income qualifications in this, I would imagine they're helping people through this. I know they, they frequently do on landlord tenant issues.
Is that on our, is that on our website? Yeah. Yeah, I think that would be, and maybe that, the order for evictions as well. Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Yeah, Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to clarify a couple of things that you've said this morning. First of all, thank you for being here and for presenting this to us, help us understand things more deeply. But with the, with the state's stay-at-home order, that's, I think you said that was an executive order 2016, expires on 4/19. Is that correct? Yes.
That is correct. Commissioner Howell.
And I believe in that, in that order, I believe it, it says that the stay-at-home order that we, would be, I'm done at the county level, would be, basically be, that the state order would supersede that, so that we can't be any more restrictive or permissive than the state order. The state order takes precedence. Is that also correct?
That's correct.
But with, with respect to the gatherings, the other executive order, if I understand correctly, that we are allowed to be more restrictive, we can't be more permissive on that one. Is that true?
I think that's true as well, Commissioner Howell.
Because I think there was a time there, we, before they, before they got into the issue of whether, well, the big debate that happened at the state level, I understand basically that we, when there was some discussion that the gathering limit of 10, whether that applied to churches or not, I think there was some discussion there. It was, it was said that at the county level, our gathering limit of 10 did still apply to churches. I think that's what we said at the time. So I have a couple of questions. Since this debate is still going on at the state level, I don't think it's done yet. I'm curious, at our, at the county level, we, if I understand correctly, KSA 65119 empowers the county commissioners specifically to issue a gathering ban similar to what was done by the majority back on March 23rd, or 25th, I guess is the one that started. Does that power also extend over to Dr. Menz? Does he have the express authority to issue a gathering ban? If so, where is that in the statute?
Commissioner Howell, that's, it's also in KSA 65119. It's in the same statute.
Very good. Yeah, so curiously, if, if Dr. Menz and the county commission disagree, how, does it kind of fall back to the same idea that whichever is the most restrictive is the one that takes precedence?
You raise a good question there, Commissioner Howell, and I may defer a little bit to Mike Papun if he, if he would disagree. At this point, I, I don't think there's any clarity on that, to be honest. The statute doesn't clear it up. I'm not aware of any cases, AG's opinions, that say if there's a disagreement between, on public gatherings between the Board of Health and the local health officers to how that would be resolved. That's, so I think it's, it's a fair question.
Commissioners Mike Papun, County Counselor, I'd have nothing to add to that. The statutes aren't clear on that, and so many of them, you have the health officer and the Board of Health, just either one, being able to act in, in several different ways, so.
Well, I guess, I guess I am, I am personally concerned about the, the religious liberty, freedom to worship aspect of the state order. This has been part of the, part of the big debate that's happened at the state level. I think the county commission, I, I wanted to have a special meeting to discuss this a little bit the other day, but we were not able to get that done. But I, I just think that the, the county commission ought to have a discussion at some point about whether or not our, our gathering ban applies to churches. Again, and please be clear, I, I'm not suggesting that churches meet in person. I don't think that they would do that anyway, but with respect to just, where are the legal, where are the legal lines in our order? I wish we, I wish we just wouldn't go there. I, I don't think that churches would gather. I think they would, they would do the right thing regardless whether we spoke to this or not, which makes me want to say, let's not include churches in the gathering ban. It's my personal opinion. I, I don't think churches would, would gather. I think they would continue doing what they're doing now, and I, I think that churches have been very, very thoughtful and good about protecting their flocks and protecting the, their congregations by not, by making personal choices to, to simply not put people at risk, and they've done a very good job at that. But since this debate's going on at the state level, I'm curious, since we have actually one order that covers gatherings and stay-at-home, I'm a little bit confused at which part of that actually applies to churches, both at the county level and at the state level. I'm a little bit confused as to which order is actually applicable to church gatherings.
I can see to address that. I think if we're talking about right now, today.
Right now.
The, the governor's order on public gatherings limits those gatherings to 10 people, no more than 10 people, and would apply to churches. With regard to the stay-at-home order, the governor's order, as you noted, supersedes Dr. Menz's through April 19th. It determines that going to a, going to church or a religious institution would be a, an essential function. It also says that running one of those is an essential function. However, that, that order is to be construed consistently with other executive orders the governor's office has, including the 10-person public gathering executive order. And so they would still limit that, and I believe, I think Mike Papun had mentioned during last week's meeting that there are some special exceptions carved out for religious gatherings within 2018 in terms of, like, I think a choir and other things that are in that order. But, so that the point, I guess, would be is that that is an essential function, but it's still subject to the 10-person public gatherings limitation.
Well, this is the last meeting we have before the, the order that expires on the 19th. At least currently, that's the current plan, and that's the stay-at-home order. I assume that she will, that the governor will, will extend that to some degree, but since our order expires on the 23rd, which is just a day after our next meeting, I thought at some point we ought to have a discussion about, are we going to make recommendations to Dr. Menz at some point? What we'd like to see included in the stay-at-home order, if there is one, that, it was reported in the news just this morning, I saw that the stay-at-home order is being, for the county, that Dr. Menz is contemplating extending that. But to the extent that we have the right to, to talk about gatherings, and we, our, our opinion does matter on that part of this, we ought to make, maybe make some recommendations to Dr. Menz, or, or pass our own gatherings, our own gatherings limit order from the county commission. We have that authority under 65119. So at some point, we ought to have a discussion. What does the county commission want with respect to gatherings? And are we going to make a recommendation to Dr. Menz since our order expires, you know, eight days from today? I would like to see us have a, a discussion about that. I, I think for us to, at this, you know, people need some certainty in the future. These orders are expiring. One of them expires in four days as of right now. One of them expires in eight days. And I think we ought to have a discussion and make our recommendations based on what we would like to see done in those orders. Me personally, I don't think that we ought to have churches included in these things. Not because I'm encouraging them to meet, I just don't think that they will, and they've been very, very good up to this point. But I just, when it comes to constitutional issues, Second Amendment, First Amendment issues, you talk about federal constitution, state constitution, and, and our own statutes, there's many reasons why these things ought to be carved out of these orders. And I just think for us to not speak to it and let the state simply handle this, in my opinion, is not, not quite good enough, in my opinion. We ought to have, we ought to have an official opinion of our board, so. Thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you. I, I would be interested to get the legal department's answer on what Commissioner Howell's talking about, how it aligns with what the Attorney General released last week. I think he was, he was very specific in that. The other thing, Justin, was a couple of weeks ago when we passed that order asking to shut down just abortions at the Trust Women's Clinic, did we ever hear anything back from that?
I'd let Mike Papun speak to that.
Would you repeat the question? I heard.
What, what response did we get from the letter that we sent to KDHE and the governor and Dr. Menz about the Trust Women's Clinic?
We, we did not get a response back from Dr. Menz or KDHE. We got a response back from the chief counsel for the governor. He thanked us for the, for the comments and, and the motion that the commission adopted, but said that essentially the governor had addressed this matter in a press conference, and, and in that press conference, he said that those were, the abortion clinic was an essential service.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna get copies printed out. USA Today wrote an article on the 13th, and I think USA Today is a well-known and widely publicized national newspaper, and they said that abortions in Wichita went up from 90 in 2019 to 252 in March of 2020. So almost tripled. And, and their directors mentioning that there are people coming in from out of state to have abortions done here. So I don't think it's hyperbole that we're having a lot of people traveling into our region. It's now been documented by one of the most widely circulated newspapers in America. So I just want that for the record, and I'll get these sent out. But that should concern anybody that's trying to support stay-at-home orders and lack of trout, you know, traveling less, going out less, the fact that abortion's almost tripled, and I would think the vast majority, they're talking about people traveling hundreds of miles to Wichita, Kansas, that, that should concern us all. So I'll get, I'll get these sent to the other commissioners, so. Thank you. Thank you, Mike, for that information, and Justin.
I might add, Commissioner, I think I did see an article that the federal court in Texas has overturned part of Governor Abbott's order down there, and they're allowing certain types of abortions in Texas now, so that might affect some of this.
Sure. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Justin, thanks for, for clearing that up. Appreciate it much. Next up, hello, Mr. Tim. Thanks again, Justin. Have a good day.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tim Kaufman. There's going to be some overlap in my conversation with you with what Adrienne talked about. I'm going to speak specifically to the sampling and testing process that we've got going here. Since our meeting last week, the Cedric County Health Department ran their drive-through local collection site four times, and those samples were then tested either at the state lab or at the Quest lab. While the Cahill lab sets criteria for samples that they'll test, we're able to use less restrictive criteria for samples sent to the Quest lab. And so beginning last Friday, we used those less restrictive screening criteria for samples that would go to the Quest lab to be tested. And then earlier this week, this is encouraging as well, KDHE has lessened their testing criteria to those that are exhibiting multiple symptoms, including a fever, but they no, no longer are requiring that the individual have a, be over the age of 60, be a healthcare worker, or have some underlying medical condition. So if they're exhibiting a fever and if they have two or more other symptoms, and then those are coughs, tightness of their chest, or shortness of breathing, they'd be eligible for testing. And so that is going to open up significantly the number of folks that we'll be able to accept samples from, and then we'll be able to send to the Cahill lab for testing. And that's going to allow us to get a much greater level of data about our community and the spread of this disease in the community. It's going to help us plan for the future. The Health Department has shared that new screening criteria with our partners at 211, and so we're now anticipating that we'll see additional folks ready to be sampled and screened. And as I've talked before, the two limiting factors that we've seen so far in terms of the volume of sampling and testing that we've been able to do are availability of testing supplies and the capacity of the labs. And so now that we have two different labs to work with, we've relieved that pressure a little bit. We still rely much more greatly on the state lab than we do on the Quest lab. But we've got some additional sampling materials that help quite a bit. We've got over 10,000 swabs on order with different vendors. In this past week, we've ordered an additional 4,000. Unfortunately, the earliest delivery date that we have for those is April 27th. So right now, we're also receiving, and last week, we received 200 swabs from the state. Adrienne mentioned that we'll be receiving 250 per week, which will allow us to greatly increase the amount of testing. As of today, our, our inventory for sampling kits is 558. So that, with an additional 250, and then as we start to receive some of those from private vendors, will allow us to be able to do significantly more testing each week than we've been able to up to this point. The Health Department has plans in place, as Adrienne mentioned, to be able to process at least 100 folks a day, providing we've got those folks through the screening process. And so that's why it's important for us to make sure the community understands that the criteria for sampling has been reduced, and we'll be able to hopefully get those slots all filled. One other additional point of encouragement is that KDHE has been, began discussions around 3D-printed sampling swabs, and so they've been in contact with some dentists. Dentists have 3D machines that they tend to print crowns and things like that for. They're asking them to, to look at printing sampling swabs that we'll be able to use. Once those are approved, we hope that those get into the, to the stream as well, and any additional source of additional sampling supplies is encouraging, and it's going to help us increase our testing volume. And so we're hoping for a quick approval, review and approval of those test swabs so that they can get into the hands of the folks who need to use them for testing. As I mentioned last week, the Health Department staff and purchasing staff are working very diligently, and they're looking at all different options to identify additional sampling supplies to help us expand our sampling and testing. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners. Yes. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. So I know that we are testing 100 people each day, but how are we, one, one of the questions that I continually get is, what is the overall scope of this virus in our community? And how are we communicating with our different health centers around? Grace Med, I know they're doing a drive-through test. All of those different types of clinics, how do we know really what the community testing is? How are we communicating that?
In a couple of different ways. One of the ways that we get that information is it comes back through KDHE. So there, we do approximately 20% of the sampling in the community. The hospitals, private clinics, some of the safety net clinics that you mentioned are also doing sampling. Individual physicians are able to do sampling if they choose to. Now, a number of them don't want to because their, their preference is that folks not an individual come into their office because of the process that you have to go through to, to collect a sample like that. It's much more efficient to do that in a large-scale drive-through process as we've done at the Health Department now. So we receive the information back from So we receive the information back from KDHE on the results of the tests for individuals that are in our county. And then we're also communicating routinely with other physicians in those safety net clinics. We've, I know that Adrian has extended an offer to a couple of the safety net clinics to have them refer their patients to the West, or the West Central Collection Site so that we'll be able to collect samples for them. Again, the, the biggest issue for everybody in the community is access to sampling supplies. And so if some of the safety net clinics, for example, run out of swabs, we're certainly gonna ask that they send those patients through our screening process that starts with 211 and then goes to our nurse triage line, and then they would become, they would get scheduled to be sampled over at West Central.
Thank you. I'm, I'm excited to see what this data dashboard is going to tell us. I know Tom and I had a conversation yesterday about Wyandotte County, and I'll just bring it up again, because last week, we were talking about data, people self-reporting, and, you know, if we don't have any data, how do we know? I mean, is, is no data better than some data that might have some errors? I mean, what, what is the philosophy, I guess? And, you know, the dashboard right now, they have, they have 400 self-reported responses, and they have, out of those self-reported responses, 178 probable cases. And so for the constituents and people that, that ask me questions, it's all about information. What kind of information are we getting people so that they understand really what the whole, the issue is, right? And, and how many cases we have, or how many presumptive cases we have? And so I'm hoping that this data dashboard does something like that.
I think that it will. And the other thing that is encouraging is that as we receive some additional sampling supplies, those people who, for example, would self-report in Wyandotte County, I would hope that anybody who believes that they're now symptomatic would call the 211 line and get, go through that screening process. Because with those reduced testing requirements, we should be able to get them in and get a sample taken so that we'd have actual, real data. Self-reported data is maybe better than no data, but we'd really like to have actual samples taken, and then those samples tested so that we've got some actual, real data to populate that dashboard.
I guess my second thing will be to make sure that our most vulnerable populations have access to testing. If we have, and I've said it earlier to Adrian, and I, I really just wanna make sure that in, you know, 67214, in, in zip codes that are predominantly lower income, where people, I would hope to have something there that people can know that testing is available. We're talking about the cost of the testing. I know that, that's covered, right, through, I don't know what program. Anyway, so I just wanna make sure that we're communicating that as best we can to ensure that those people who may think that they have symptoms know exactly where to go, know that the test is covered. So I, I really want to make sure that we communicate that.
Absolutely. And one of the things I mentioned earlier is that we're gonna really ramp up our communications with the community to let them know that the criteria for testing has been lowered so that we can get some additional folks in that may have been on the borderline right now. We wanna make sure that people understand that we're open for testing, and the best possible thing that they can do is call 211 to get that initial screening process started so that we can get them in. One of the challenges in some of our neighborhoods may be around transportation. That's something that we're still struggling with, because not only are we short-supplied regarding sampling equipment supplies, but PPE, we still need to be careful with our PPE. And so ideally, we do our testing in a drive-through process as we have been so far. So one of the things that we continue to work on is figure out, how do we solve that transportation problem for individuals who may be symptomatic, but they don't have their own transportation? So we're still working through that process. But we absolutely wanna target those neighborhoods where folks are, may not have their own primary care physician, and need to take advantage of the sampling opportunities that we have.
So what happens, I, I think of all of the parents with children at home who might not have daycare, who might not have anybody to watch them. How are we handling maybe that scenario?
Again, depending on the size of the family. Ideally, because those folks are already in close contact, it wouldn't hurt for them to put their kids in the backseat after they've gone through the process and got their appointment time. So initially, again, someone would call 211 and get into the queue. They would be transferred to our nurse triage line, who would then give them a scheduled appointment time to go through the, the drive-through testing site. They could bring their kids with them, and probably, depending on the circumstances involved, it may be appropriate to sample the whole family.
Yeah, Commissioner Dennis.
First of all, thanks for what you've given us. And I, I agree that we need good data to make any kind of decisions. One of the points that Commissioner Howell made was that we may have to make another decision here in a week or so. And without good data, it's kinda hard for us to make a decision in a week or so. You've got 500 kits right now. That's .001% of the population of Sedgwick County, if we use all 500 of your kits. So it's difficult for us, as we're moving forward, to make an informed decision based on such a very, very limited sample size of what's going on in Sedgwick County. So I, I think that if, if the Governor doesn't take action, and, and we need, and it comes to us for a decision here in another week, we gotta have better data to make a decision on than, than what we've got right now. Our sample size is just too small to say that there's a problem.
So our, our sample size, but that, that, those 550 kits don't include safety net clinics or other people testing, right?
Correct. Yeah, they do not include the hospitals, or the primary care physicians, or the safety net clinics.
So to Commissioner Dennis's point, would there be a way to get, is, is all that going to be included on the dashboard? Not just our data, but all the data?
Correct. Any, any sample that has been tested either by the, the state lab or one of the labs on an individual that resides in Sedgwick County gets reported back to the Health Department. And so we'll know. It, it looks like, I don't have a complete data set from KDHE yet, but it appears that we are probably representing, our, the samples that we process represent about 20% of the overall universe of data. So there, there should be four to five times more data than what we can provide because we've got other partners across the community that are doing sampling as well. So when we present data, we'll present the full, the full picture of those samples that have been collected and tested for anybody in Sedgwick County. Again, a really small number, not nearly the, the kind of number that we would hope for, but based on the, the limited amount of supplies, we'll have every bit of data available to you.
But out of 500,000 people here in Sedgwick County, we wanna, we need to know the scope of that problem for 500,000 people. And until we can get the testing supplies, and I'm not criticizing you or anyone, I know you're working tremendously hard to get the testing supplies that we need here in Sedgwick County. We are doing what we need to do. It's just that we need to put more pressure on the, on the federal government and the state government to get the testing supplies here so we can know the scope of the problem.
Okay. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Chairman. Just, I, I hear what you're saying, Commissioner Dennis, and I, and I, I know that it's one strategy, but I'd like to just refocus our, our attention back on our hospitals. The reason we're trying to flatten the curve is, is all about them. It's about making sure that we have resources available for people who need the help. And that's the only thing we ought to be looking at. So whether the community itself has asymptomatic COVID-19 or not is really not the most important thing. The most important thing is what's happening within the hospitals. And I'm getting data from people inside those hospitals telling me that it's extremely slow. They're underwhelmed right now. And that's a good thing. The community's done a really good job of mitigating the transmission of this, of this virus, to the point that the hospitals, I don't think are gonna be overwhelmed. I don't think there's any way to, to prove that yet. We'll just have to, time will tell, but it appears that we've done our job. I mean, you know, I know this is just my opinion, I'll say it again. I think that, I think that we have flattened the curve enough that the hospitals are not gonna hit a, a time that they're overwhelmed in terms of staff, and beds, and ICUs, and ventilators. The PPE is continuing to be a problem. And that's, that is, that's probably the biggest issue. But the number one thing I make, I keep asking about is, how many beds do we have? How many ICU beds do we have? How many ventilators do we have? How many of that's being utilized? What's been our peak in terms of the usage? I mean, we talked about, we have 100, 120 cases in Sedgwick County right now that are somewhat active, tested positive, but how many of them are needing help from hospitals? We don't know. And I think that's the data that we really ought to be looking at, more than anything else. Because the, the goal, in my opinion, is to, again, if we keep our eye on that ball, the goal is to make sure we continue to flatten the curve, to make sure that the hospitals can keep up with what's coming at them. And that's the only thing we ought to be looking at. We want this virus to, to, to run its course and get out of here, and get life back to normal as quickly as possible. And the only way to do that, frankly, is to, is to let it do its thing. I heard on the radio this morning, they use the word eradicate, but they wanna eradicate the virus. And I can, I'll ask Adrian again. That's never been the goal. Stopping the virus has never been the strategy. It's trying to manage the impact at the hospitals and our first, and our first responders with PPE, and making sure they have beds and ICU resources and ventilators as needed. And what I can tell right now is, again, I have people from inside the hospitals telling me what's going on inside the hospitals. The numbers there are, are very low compared to what we are ready for. And so I would, I would suggest, we're, we've done a good job, and I don't, I don't wanna see any more ratcheting up of anything. I think we need to maybe relax a little bit, and I think, especially the stay-at-home order. The stay-at-home order is the most damaging thing to our economy, to our people, to our families, in every way. The stay-at-home order is the most difficult thing. It's the other things that are, are more easily, easy to handle. The gathering bans, as much as we don't like them, they're, they're somewhat, we can, we can mitigate those things by keeping our groups small, social distancing, wearing masks, all the things that the grocery stores have done with the, the shielding, the staging, the one-way aisles. There's a tremendous number of things that have been added to reduce the spread of this virus. And those things are all, those, those can all stay in place. But the one thing we ought to be looking at to drive our policy is what's happening inside those hospitals. And right now, we, the data I'm getting is, we're, we're doing pretty well. And so I, I would love to see that be our focus. If we, if we were able to test 100% of the population, what would it tell us? If we had all the kits, what would it tell us? It would just tell us, we don't have a problem. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Chairman, before Tim leaves the podium, just to tie in about three or four things. Me, sorry. On? Very good. Sorry. Inadvertently turned my microphone off. Let me just kinda tie a few things together to, of what Commissioner Dennis talked about, Commissioner Howell just talked about, and have Tim maybe address the future, because we do have expiring orders next week, and we do, I think it is germane, that next Wednesday, maybe we talk about what's gonna happen with the orders. And I'd like Tim to kinda talk about if testing becomes more prevalent, which by his report and Adrian's report this week, it clearly is, maybe not to the level we're all comfortable yet, but it is, there is some signs that we're going to be able to increase testing. What it means as we move forward to what we've referred to a month ago as Chapter Two of this book. What happens now when stay-at-home is either reduced or removed, and how we move forward, and what that looks like? And to me, a, a key component of that, in addition to all what you brought up already, is the availability of testing, and the availability of PPEs. Because we need to keep our EMS, fire, and sheriff officials safe as they do their job, just as Dylan's and Costco and all these other, we're all after the same PPEs right now, and there still are not enough. So, but as that gets reduced, Tim, can you talk about the two stages of, of testing? Not only the tests, but then the follow-up that happens after we begin to get test results back, and what that could mean for staffing and et cetera? To get back to what Commissioner Dennis talked about 20 minutes ago, what we do with county personnel. Go ahead.
Right. So the first phase is testing, and we've got the, the sampling and then the testing. And then that gives us information that we can use, and we have our epidemiologists then start to do contact, contact tracing. And right now, we've got about 10 or 11 staff that are doing some of that work. As we see more positive test results, then that, every time that happens, that is work, additional work for an epidemiologist to make those contacts, find out who they've been in contact with, and work backwards to who else may be exposed. And again, we wanna know as many people that are exposed as possible so that the folks that we identify as being positive are then able to isolate so that they reduce the number of contacts that they have and don't infect others. And so we've got a point in time in the future that I anticipate where we're gonna need some additional contract, contact tracers. Now, again, that's a skill that is different than what many of our staff do right now. And so one of the things that we're looking for is skill match between the folks that may be considering a furlough, and then some of this additional work that we have coming. This is the most fascinating problem that I've ever encountered, because the timing is just always a little bit off. We had this hit a little bit before we had an opportunity nationwide to get sampling supplies ready, to get PPE ready, and we've been playing catch-up all along. And now we're in a situation where, from a management standpoint, we may need to reduce the number of staff that we've got on, on the payroll at any given time, but we know that in the near future, we're probably gonna have an additional workload for a specialized work. And so we'll have to figure out if we're able to match up some of those folks that have identified that they don't have a current full workload, may be interested in a furlough, and then some of this additional work that we've got coming related to contact tracing as we have more tests and more positive results, which will lead to more individuals that we need to contact. And every time we have a positive result, we need to work with that individual backwards to make sure that we understand who they've been in close contact with, to make sure that we contact that person, get them into a situation where they're not isolated, but we wanna make sure that they're quarantined, at the very least, for a period of time so that we can, again, continue to reduce the, the spread. Because as Commissioner Howell mentioned, he's absolutely right. What we're trying to do primarily is make sure that we don't overwhelm the hospitals, because the hospitals are the, the endpoint for folks, that that's where they get the most intensive care, if this, and again, this is very symptomatic, the symptoms differ from individual to individual. Some folks may feel very few symptoms, they may be able to take care of themselves at home. There are others who need very intensive care that's only available to them in a hospital. So we wanna make sure that we don't overwhelm that hospital. So again, we're trying to make sure that we limit the spread of this so that we don't overwhelm the hospital system. And that, that includes contact, contact tracing after we get test results back.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
Just one other comment.
Okay.
Thank you, Chairman. Just wanted to remind ourselves, you know, when we talked about this on March 22nd, we had a meeting here, there was some, some concern about the, the, the numbers were going to overwhelm our hospitals. At that time, again, it was just very speculative, what, what might happen. It was very preliminary data, and I, and I know everyone's doing the very best they can to, to provide the best data. But the number that we're given, you know, the worst case was 52,000 hospitalizations in our regional hospitals. That was a big number, and that was based on all of the data they had at the time. I would just remind us that as of today, oh, the latest report on the state's website is, there's been 309 hospitalizations in total for the entire state of Kansas. The 52,000 was just for Sedgwick County. That was the estimate, potentially, that was worst case. We've had 309 for the entire state of Kansas. So this is radically different than what we were told a few weeks ago. So with that in mind, you know, I, I just think we need to continue to stay focused on what's happening inside the hospitals. And I would just urge them, the hospitals, to, to give us a, a crisp status of what's going on inside there. How many beds do they have? How many respirators do they have? How many COVID patients are, are being treated there? To me, that's, that ought, that should be the data that drives our policy. And if they're, if we, we think they're gonna get overwhelmed, I certainly wanna do whatever's needed to help them. But that's the number one thing. And I just think that we gotta stay focused on that. And one other question, I would like, I don't know if you can answer this, Tim, but I keep asking, what's, what's the status for antibody tests? I know that that's been a desirable. To me, if we're gonna do some widespread testing, that'd be the testing I would like to try to get.
I don't have a definitive answer for you.
What is an antibody test?
An antibody test would be a blood test that we would take a sample from an individual to see whether or not they've had the disease. So if you have the disease, then there's a marker in your blood that shows that you've had it, and hopefully, you're in a stage where you've developed an immunity to it. And so that's kind of an, an after-the-fact test. Everything that I'm reading right now says that we are months away still from an, an accurate antibody test. One of the struggles that they're having right now is if developing an antibody test that will help them distinguish between COVID-19 antibodies and then other that will help them distinguish between COVID-19 antibodies and then other coronavirus antibodies. And so, they don't want to get those two mixed up. So, it's a matter of getting that antibody test refined. The latest thing that I read said that we were still months away before we'd have accurate data there.
Well, the good thing about the antibody test, it tells you that you are kind of past the virus if you test positive for the antibodies. If you test for COVID-19 using a swab, number one, it's very invasive, and number two, it takes days usually to get the results back. And if you test negative, it doesn't mean you're not vulnerable to getting the virus in the future. So, testing the population, if we're able to prove that the population doesn't have the virus, it doesn't really help us. It only helps us if they have had the virus, and if I understand correctly, the COVID tests only test positive if you're dealing with the virus at that time. Once you've had the virus, I don't know that it still tests positive once the virus has run its course. A couple of weeks after you've received the virus, I don't know how that test works. But it's very invasive, it's also expensive, and the results are slow. And to me, the antibody test is the number-one thing we ought to be trying to get. If we're going to test masses, number one, it's not invasive. Some places in the country, they're advertising that the results are minutes, and they're actually talking about National Baseball, National Baseball, I guess, is trying to administer a couple thousand tests or something like that to try to get their sport back online. And so, I guess, I think the tests are out there, maybe. I don't understand the details exactly. But to the extent that the tests are apparently hitting the market or becoming available right now, that, to me, is the low-hanging fruit. We ought to try to get the antibody tests. If we're going to test anything en masse, it ought to be the antibody tests, and for numbers of reasons, but.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
All right. We have no other questions? Thank you. A motion to receive and file a report?
We've got Rusty calling in.
Oh, okay.
Thanks, Commissioners.
Thanks, Tim. Rusty, are you on?
Yes, sir, I'm on.
Okay. Welcome to the commission meeting.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. I will, I was watching it on live streaming and full behind, so sorry. I'll give you an update today on personal protective equipment supplies, a follow-up or update from last week. Since last week, we have received an unexpected, very small delivery of some protective equipment from the state. They acquired some, it's my understanding, that they have probably been trying to make purchases themselves, just as the federal government has been doing to resupply the strategic national stockpile. But nonetheless, we received a very, very small, unexpected delivery from the state within the past week to supplement what we had. Purchasing has continued to make acquisitions. I think at this point, we are probably over, well over 70 vendors that we have been in contact with, vetted their product, asked for quotes, kind of worked through that process to determine if what they say they have is what they have, how long it takes, how long it would actually take for them to deliver, and whether the cost is something that we could work with, or whether it was extremely inflated. So, to date, purchasing continues to work through vendors that we've been successful with and vet new vendors as they reach out to us, or we get them through different sources. And, you know, we've worked with vendors from, anywhere from Home Depot and Staples to companies that are not well-known to us, like Wesco and Safewear, that we've been in contact with and worked with them to vet their products and try to make acquisitions where appropriate. In the past week, we've made progress on efforts with local businesses, which are realigning protective equipment and/or supplies. We have enlisted a local business who will make isolation gowns for first responders. They have, they had a sample material, we've vetted their prototype, and they are receiving bulk material to make these gowns. They'll be starting production soon, and purchasing has worked with them to get them on board as a vendor. We have a second vendor, a second business who's considering making gowns for one of the hospitals, and our assigned person with the county has been working with both the hospitals and with these businesses, making sure that the healthcare partners, as well as first response personnel, are seeing what's available locally, so that we can be self-sustained on some of these items. We won't be self-sustained on all, but we can be locally self-sustained on quite a few items. We've also approved a prototype face shield from a local business who's manufacturing. They're going to give us a number of those at no cost, and then they would be able to manufacture additional face shields at a reasonable cost. So, we're still working with them on that. There are also a couple of other local vendors or businesses who have geared up to make 3D or otherwise make face shields for hospitals and for others. So, we have, appear to have face shields covered in this community without necessarily having to go out and purchase in the future, we hope. There's two local businesses who are making hand sanitizer. We are dealing with one, and we're reviewing the other, the other person, or the other company who's making hand sanitizer at this time. So, we're also working with Wichita State University, their biology department and engineering departments on the review of literature and investigating some evidence-based solutions for sanitizing certain types of masks. If push comes to shove, and that's what we needed to do to be able to get by, then we want to have a better practice or a better evidence-based practice to do that, so we can be confident in that. So, we're working closely with them to get to a conclusion fairly quickly. All the system partners, when I say system partners, all of those different agencies and organizations who have submitted requests for protective equipment and supplies through the county's emergency operations center, which then filters up through the state Department of Emergency Management, and then on up to the feds. All of those folks are now submitting the required to submit, and they are starting to submit information about what supplies they have on hand and what their estimated average daily use rates are. That's kind of a work in progress. Some have mechanisms in place to do that routinely, others had no formal inventory control methods in place, and so, they are constructing those as we speak. So, the numbers are, the numbers are what they are. Some of them are more reliable than others, but they at least give us some understanding of what people have on hand, what their daily use rates appear to be at this time, based on the volumes of cases we're seeing and the folks that they're dealing with. And we assume that over the next couple of weeks, those processes in those agencies will be refined, and our numbers will get better. So, based on the businesses that are stepping up to make items locally, we believe that we will be able to have some degree of local self-sufficiency on probably gowns, face shields, hand sanitizer, intubation boxes, and disposable stethoscopes. If we don't have it now, we will have it shortly, within the next couple of weeks. And then, other items, we would have to continue using our purchasing department and/or depending on the state to supply certain types of masks and some other peripheral types of equipment, such as Tyvek coverall-type suits. So, that's kind of where we are today, is that we feel like, at the moment, we are in a position that we're not stressed, but we do need to continue to look to the state for whatever supplies they can push our way as they have the availability, and also count on our purchasing department to continue to vet vendors, so that we know what's available and we can get supplies, so that we don't get into a position where any of our first responders or hospitals or other medical partners are in a position where their staff is exposed because they simply don't have what they need. So, that's kind of where we stand right now, and I'll be happy to try to answer questions.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions? Yes, Mr. Dennis.
Hey, Rusty, this is Commissioner Dennis.
Yes, sir.
Last week, I received a call from two representatives of a company called Wesco. One of them was here in Newton, and the other was down in Texas, and they said that they could provide PPE and bulk, and I haven't ever gotten any feedback. Did we contact them? Are they able to do what they said? What's the status, I guess, is what my question is?
Yes, sir. Purchasing has been in contact with them, and I also was on an email chain where I offered up a quantity that we wanted them to quote a price on, and I know one of our purchasing, one of our buyers has been in contact with them. As of this morning, there was no indication that we had actually ordered from them, but our purchasing department is communicating with them and working with them.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Rusty, thanks. Thanks for all the work.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Yes, sir. Now, we entertain a motion to receive and file.
So moved.
Second. Been moved to second. Any other comments?
Yes. Thank you, Chairman. So, just as a way to wrap this up, a comment I'd like to make is, I still don't think waiting until next Wednesday is going to be satisfying to the community. They need to have some planning time, if possible, and I would like to see us have a conversation. If we have to have a special meeting, that's fine, but I think we need to, we need to address this before next Wednesday. What are we going to do with regards to our Sedgwick County orders? I would like to see us separate out the gatherings and the stay-at-home, and maybe make recommendations to Dr. Menz on stay-at-home order, and then speak to the gatherings limit from the commission, is my preference. But if we don't do that today, then we need to probably schedule a special meeting, so we don't wait until next Wednesday to do that.
My comment on that would, I think a special meeting would be in order. I don't, we don't have direct, we don't have confirmation information enough for me to make a decision today on either one of those two things, including direct contact with the governor's office and discussion directly with Dr. Menz, and further discussion with our hospitals. So, we can do a special meeting sometime between now and then would probably be appropriate.
Could we make a target, maybe this Friday, to have that discussion? Would that be a good goal to have?
Can try. Today's Wednesday.
I mean, that would give a few extra days for people to respond. If we wait till Monday or Tuesday, that's not as helpful, so.
Commissioners, Mike Papoun, County Councilor, one factor that you might want to consider before having a special meeting is that we're going to know shortly what the governor intends to do with her stay-at-home order. If she extends her stay-at-home order, the action of this board for, in a special meeting, won't have any effect in terms of overruling that.
Right.
And the gathering aspects that we can amend have to be more restrictive than less restrictive, and I don't think you're wanting to be less or more restrictive, Commissioner. So, I just think we may want to follow what the governor's doing before we launch into a special meeting, is my thought.
Just in my own opinion, I guess, to the extent that we are issuing orders on stay-at-home and on gathering limits, I would rather see us have the authority, I know that she has the authority to speak to the entire state. One-third of the state has no cases of COVID at this time. I would rather see her trust the local county-level Board of Health and medical officer to make those decisions based on what's going on in their own local community, rather than a very broad, very large order for the entire state of Kansas, when one-third of our counties, one-third of our counties have no cases at this time. If nothing else, I'd like to maybe at least encourage her not to issue those orders, knowing that we will. If we simply sit back and don't say anything at all, I have no doubt that she will issue those orders, and I'd love to encourage the state to basically allow the counties to make the best decisions based on their local situation, rather than a very large, broad-sweeping policy that doesn't really affect, is not necessarily based on data everywhere. It doesn't seem to be justified, I guess, in my opinion, in some counties. So, I wish we could speak to that and say, we are doing the order, allow us to do that based on what's going on here. So, if we don't speak to it, I have no doubt that she will do what she's going to do. So, I hate to wait, I guess is my point.
Okay, well, at this point, I kind of agree with Mr. Papoun, and I'm having a lot of direct contacts with a lot of sources, and I think probably all of us have our own contacts. We've been in contact directly with Johnson County, others, I know Lacy has, and I know Commissioner O'Donnell has. So, I think a broad statement right now would be a little inappropriate with all of us not having our information directly.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second to receive and file. Any other comments? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item D, Discussion of Proposed County Furlough Policy.
Commissioners, Tom Stoles, County Manager, a couple of weeks ago, I prepared you that we were going to address a couple of employee issues. The first was last week with the recommendation and ultimate passage of the COVID-19 stipend or hero hazard pay that you all approved. And the second component of that, which we talked about a couple of weeks ago, was organizational furlough policy. The leadership team has, we've talked about this a lot over the last couple of weeks, and we'll tag-team this today to some degree. I'll start off, let's see if we have it up, and you all should have hard copies of the PowerPoint in front of you. And then, Sheena will kind of walk us through the technicalities of what we're presenting, and Lindsay is on standby to talk about finance ramifications. Sheena, if you could go to the next slide. Since, just to recap quickly, since bed March, most county facilities have been closed. We have several hundred employees that are teleworking. We have a few still working in the buildings, but not across the board, but in areas of the board, we've seen county services significantly reduced just because of the environment. First responders and clinicians, correction staff, health department staff, they're actually working in a higher capacity right now due to the environment, due to the stressful environment of what the virus is causing in the community. So, we have a big organization, a very diverse organization, some of which are very busy, some of which not so busy, and that is not unique in the private or public world today across the spectrum of the country. So, we talked about moving forward with the furlough policy. Flip it again, please. These discussions, whether it's hazard pay or furlough or any kind of job action, these are always very difficult times organizationally. None of us want to be here, but here we are. We do recognize organizationally that we have reduced workload in certain areas. We recognize our role as fiscal managers of the people's money, and we want to be responsible and accountable for that. And we need to talk about stabilization of the organization. And when I talk about stabilization, I mean that we continue to operate in areas which are critical and essential, particularly in this unique time, but yet maintain fiscal prudence and recognize that this is not a matter that's going to be over in a week and a half or two weeks. This is going to be a matter that will stretch not only into the remainder of the 2020 budget year, but probably the 20, well, definitely the 2021 budget, and probably the 2022 budget. So, we're trying to make sure that the organization is stabilized and viable because of the important services that we provide to the community. So, with that, I want to have Sheena talk you through the county strategy, or what we're proposing today for your consideration, and then we can discuss. So, Sheena?
Thank you, Tom, and good morning to everybody. It's nice to see you again.
Aye.
Talk a little bit about what our furlough definition is. When we claim that an employee is going to go on furlough, they will still remain Sedgwick County employees. We will be placing them on a leave-of-absence-without-pay status, so if you will, they will just be inactive. All of their health benefits will remain intact. That is something that we elected to do for them. They will still have to make their employee contributions, and we have set up communications with those who will be furloughed, if that is the way that we choose to move forward, when we would capture those payments. In addition, they would be eligible for state unemployment and the federal subsidy. We know that right now, the state of Kansas is having a lot of issues with unemployment, and we are watching that every day. Hopefully, they will get their systems in order, and everyone who needs those unemployment benefits will be able to get those. We recognize that it's roughly 2/3 of an employee's average weekly wage, and that federal subsidy, as we understand it, will kick into $600 per week for the allowance. And with the extension, unemployment is also available to employees for 39 weeks. Of course, that is not what we're proposing, but that is the extension in the CARES Act. In addition, what we are proposing is the furlough is voluntary. On Friday, we set out communications to all On Friday, we set out communications to all Cedric County employees that they had every opportunity to apply for this. And when I say apply, it was just a simple application that let us know what department they were working in, just basic information. That deadline was yesterday at 6:00 PM, and at 6:00 PM, we had 222 applicants that have requested furlough. We spent the evening going through those, human resources did, and we have now sent those back to the department for their review. Things that we want the department to consider are what is your workload right now? Would you be able to still function at this level with employees gone or furloughed? We also looked at the categories. You might recall, a month ago, we sent an exercise back to the departments to have them categorize all of their employees as emergency essential, standard essential, or non-essential. And again, that was just based around this pandemic. So we reviewed all of those, and we made determinations who would be eligible for furlough based on those categories. Our emergency essential are not eligible for furlough. We recognize that they are on the front lines, we need their services. So those that applied for furlough and were in that category were denied. We are proposing the furlough for the voluntary as April 19th through the 23rd. And the last bullet point on here is we are looking at other strategic furloughs. Again, last week, we didn't even know what number to anticipate for people who would request a furlough. We now know what that number is. Lindsay was very kind to run us some numbers yesterday, so we, we have a better picture of what that looks like today. But I would also say that now that list is back in the department's hands for them to review to make sure that they can continue the services if those employees were furloughed. So we still have a long ways to go with this process before we know what our next steps will be.
We, we have also talked about as a staff, and I've talked about it with a couple of you, what about future furloughs? What's, what's the remainder of the, of the year look like? And depending on how this all transpires, and Lindsay's watching numbers on a weekly and quarterly basis, it is, it is possible, I would say right now it is probable, that we will have to come back organizationally and look at some type of furlough, not necessarily what we're recommending today, but perhaps it's possible that in the fourth quarter of this year, we will ask all employees, top to bottom, to take a particular period of a furlough, maybe a week of furlough. And again, for all the reasons that we stated above, fiscal prudence of the organization, stability of the organization, trying to, recognizing that our revenues are going to be down this year, and, and trying to avoid layoff at this point. It's part of the strategy of just trying to protect people's careers and jobs long-term. And if we all have to make a little bit of sacrifice, I think organizationally, that's worth it to protect the organization long-term and to protect employees long-term with, with their careers. So we will continue to keep you aware as we move forward in the next weeks and months of our fiscal situation and whether other furloughs are needed in the future. And we will, of course, bring that to you before we would enact anything. Our goal, as I said, for, for 2020 is no layoffs. That's an organizational goal that we have expressed to our members. And we will do everything possible as we work through the 2021 budget to, and we know we're going to have to cut, and we know we're going to have to sacrifice, and we, and we know we're going to have to perhaps even reduce some service levels, but we're going to try not to have layoffs in 2021 through our strategic budgeting. So with that, I'd be glad to answer questions. I also want to put up this last slide. The employees through this process and the department heads through this process have been fantastic to work with. I think you can see organizationally, nobody wants to furlough. And when you have 200-plus people stand up and say, I'll do what's best for the organization, I think that's significant. And even though we won't probably be able to allow some of those because of their essentialness to this organization right now, I think it speaks volumes to this team and this, in this, in this organization we run. So I just wanted to call out the employees, as I know you all have too, and thank them for their service during a time which is very unique right now. None of us have ever been through it in our lives, and I think I just want to take time to thank the employees. So now with that, we can answer questions and, or go whatever direction you want to go.
Couple, let me lead off. Is that all right, Commissioner Cruz? Okay, so you've got 226 volunteered, and now they're all going to their departments. I just want to, you, and it would.
222.
222.
Yeah.
Nice round number.
Yes.
Okay. And your goal is effective April 19th, which is in four days. So are all the departments, are you comfortable, all departments are going to be able to say yes or no by Friday?
Their deadline to communicate.
Whenever, April 19th, sorry.
Yeah. Their deadline for the departments to communicate back to us is 2:00 PM today.
Okay.
That gives us one more chance to look over the list and review, and then we would communicate to departments on Friday, I'm sorry, employees on Friday, so that, that way they would know if their request for furlough had been approved or denied, whether they needed to report to work or perform work on Monday.
So my second of two is that, so they would, then those furloughed, if they chose and were selected, they would be able to be eligible for the federal subsidy and the unemployment and things like that?
Yes.
Okay, and so are they also eligible to use their vacation pay if they wanted to?
No, they would.
Because they'd have to do either, either or?
That's correct. So we are, we are opting for an unpaid furlough, which means that they would be eligible for the unemployment as opposed to a paid furlough where, and certain organizations have done that.
Right.
Yeah, and they've allowed that. One thing that we are doing, or we can do, is that we would take all those names, we would upload that on a spreadsheet, which is what the Department of Labor is requesting for organizations who have a large number of employees. That initiates the initial claim for these folks.
Okay.
And, and I would also add as well, if we are looking at the 19th through the 23rd, our employees wouldn't look to file that first week's claim until the 26th.
Okay.
And hopefully, by then, they will be able to work out some of their technical issues.
And just to clarify, that's May 23rd as the document. It would be effective until May 23rd.
Yeah, right. But it'd start essentially.
April 19th.
April 19th, okay. Yeah. Thank you for the questions, and it sounds like a pretty solid plan so far.
So can you speak to, there was a question regarding the, the May 23rd date. Somebody had mentioned they, they know something we don't know. Can we speak to, you know, going back to the extension? Or how long is the shutdown or the stay-at-home going to be in, in place? I mean, can you just speak to why it is until the 23rd of May?
It's the start of a pay period, is the short answer. We didn't want to put anything out very far because this is changing very rapidly. And so we can always extend things, but we felt that looking, if you will, four to five weeks in advance was all that we were comfortable at looking.
It's two pay periods, is that right?
Yes.
So it's, that's the dates, magic dates?
Yeah. There is, there is no secret motive behind that date other than that was our comfort level, and it's the start of a pay period.
It's, it's the Memorial Day weekend also after, and also, and I couldn't remember if Sheena mentioned this, we can call employees back before then to, if things significantly change. And that, that's been made pretty clear to the employees that the 23rd date is basically best guess, to answer your question directly.
Yes, Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you. Sheena, thank you for the overview and Tom for your leadership on this. I guess what's heartening to me is that these employees are voluntarily doing this. There was a lot of discussion and attention with what the Wichita City Council went through with their furlough policy, which was more mandated from the manager on down, where this is more grassroots. I was concerned, you know, a week or so ago, I was even asking the, the manager if we needed the commission and top-level staff to take pay cuts during this time. And he said he thinks at this point with, with voluntary furloughs. I'm, I'm impressed, 222 people. Have, have you calculated if we allowed all 222 people, how much that would save the county?
I would defer to Lindsay on that.
I'm sure Lindsay.
We have done that, sir.
Okay.
But I would, would also add, we have had a chance to look at how, again, they are categorized, and we know that 100% of these volunteers would not be approved based on those, those categories.
And while Lindsay's getting ready, I, I might mention, there's going to come a time, not to avoid Commissioner O'Donnell's question last, we, last week, there's going to come a time, a time and a place this year where all employees are going to be asked to sacrifice. I can almost assure you of that. So there will be a time that we will have that discussion.
Great.
Okay. Thank you.
And one other goal, just while, while Lindsay's getting ready to talk about numbers, we, we have been, from the time of discussion forward, we're trying to create an environment here through this furlough that our employees can land as softly as possible through benefits from unemployment, through the federal subsidy, and to make sure that their benefits stay continued throughout the process. So it's, we are trying to be as diligent as possible to make sure that our employees are whole through this as best we can, and that's, that's a big part of the discussion. There may come a time and a place later in the year where we cannot guarantee that. And at that point, then it becomes sacrifice for the organization, all of us. So, Lindsay?
Okay. Good morning, Commissioners.
Commissioner Howell had a question.
I just want to have, this may be a Sheena question. So I'm just curious about someone who may be on FMLA under the federal provision that they says they get two-thirds their salary. How does that play into this? Do they switch from FMLA to furlough, or is there two different categories still? How does, how does that work?
So if someone was on FMLA or the FF-CRA, which is the extension of that, if they were to furlough, that would stop, and they would go on furlough.
Okay.
Yeah. And in regards to their wages, they're still looking back on those past 12 months to figure out what that two-thirds would be.
Okay.
It's the reportable wage.
All right. I think I have got a Lindsay question, but let her talk, let her talk first. Thank you.
Hi, Lindsay.
Welcome.
Hello, Chairman, hello Commissioners. Lindsay Purusso, you're CFO. So last night, you received an email from me, which I'm sure with all your other hundreds you're getting, you probably haven't had a chance to see. So this week, I've learned my lesson, and you're getting handouts. So if I, you will bear with me, I'll just kind of walk through this. And then Commissioner Howell, if it's okay at that point, I can get to your question. So like Sheena said, there were 222 applications that were received as of 6:00 PM tonight, or last night, excuse me. 198 of those folks were full-time positions, 24 of them were part-time. So when we put that on a full-time equivalency basis, that gives us about 210 FTEs. The average hourly rate for those folks was $17.31, and so that's about $36,000 on an annual basis. Because we are speaking so much about weekly pay, that would equate to about $692 per week. You can see on the handout how those number of applicants broke out by department. They're listed from the number received, the greatest number received on down. So you can see Calm Care by far had the largest number of applicants, but of course, they're also a very large department. So that's not that surprising when you look at that number. And then you can see how that falls throughout the rest of the organization to make up those 222 folks that made the request. So then getting to Commissioner O'Donnell's question, what are the potential savings? First, to reiterate what Sheena said, we know that not all of these folks will be able to take it. So this would be the most we could expect to save. Right now, there's just not enough data to tell you what amount would take it, be approved or not. We expect a high number, but this just gives you some context. Also, to reiterate what Sheena says, these savings figures do not include anything about health insurance. We're going to continue to pay the employer portion of health insurance throughout this. So this is literally only wages and the payroll taxes we would pay on those wages. And so you can see in the chart under number three that the savings are broken out by type of fund. And so in our county property tax-supported funds, which is where we spend most of our time making decisions, it's where 67% of your personnel costs are generated, we would expect savings at just under $400,000 for all 222 of the positions. But you can see about 90 of the FTEs belong to those funds. There is the county treasurer's auto license fund, 18 of the FTEs came from that area. And so savings there would be roughly $60,000. Within the elected offices' technology funds, there were four applicants, and that would generate subbing, savings of roughly $12,000 over this five-week period. And then finally, you can see the next largest category, or I'm sorry, the single largest category, or the requests coming from grant funds. And so within those grant funds, there are almost 98 FTEs who made that request, and that would generate savings also of just under $400,000. So in total, from those 210 FTEs or 222 headcount, we would see savings of roughly $860,000 over that five-week period. And to put that in context, through March, our average weekly payroll was about $3.8 million. And so this would be about 4% of those total personnel costs we pay out on average. So just some context, and now I'm happy to answer any questions.
Weekly payroll is, you mean bi-weekly?
So I, the bi-weekly would be twice that, but I broke it down to weekly to try and put it in some context since we're talking about five weeks.
Yep, Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you. Well, first of all, I appreciate the work that the staff has put in this. It is fiscally responsible for us to take a look at something like this. I guess my concerns are on, on your briefing, Lindsay. 101 out of Calm Care. When Calm Care is something that during this time, we've got a lot of people under stress and losing 101 people, that might be a Sheena question too, but that seems very significant that we would cut Calm Care, possibly 101 positions. The second part of it on the, on your number three area, 97.9 of the FTEs are from grant funding, which really, we, we're going to have to turn that money back, wouldn't we? That's not money that we would keep if we saved it.
So potentially, there could be very few of those. Most of this is generated out of Calm Care, though, and so that is not necessarily a direct grant from the state in many cases. It's, it's earned revenue. So if those folks aren't working, then they're not earning revenue. And so if, if these folks do have a diminished workload, if some number of these 101 folks do have diminished workload and aren't earning money, it actually would help that Calm Care grant fund be sustainable in the long term because they wouldn't have to support those positions while they're not earning revenue. And so we can dig into the details on that and let you know if there's any specific grant-funded positions where we would have to return the money to the grantor.
Okay, well, I don't see that we're being fiscally responsible if we return grant money. So I'd, I'd be interested in what we're doing in, on that respect. But we also have to be responsible to our citizens, and Calm Care is a place where that we are very, very responsive to the needs of our citizens. So I, I know that you all are probably looking at this, I'm asking questions, and I'm sure that you've already addressed, but it's concerning. Thank you.
Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, just so, I don't, I'm not that familiar with unemployment insurance. So can you estimate, how, how does that work? If someone was to be trying to draw that benefit, how, how is that money calculated? What's, what would they expect? If they're earning an average of $692 a week now, what would their unemployment insurance be for these folks?
So unemployment right now is calculated, and there's actually a calculator out on the Department of Labor's website, which is really useful. It allows folks to go in and enter their actual earnings on a quarterly basis. Right now, they're looking at calendar year 2019. And so the default unemployment payment is two-thirds of your, I believe, highest wage during that time. And then the federal government has stepped in and said, $600 payment. That is what I think we're, there's the concern about when that can actually be paid out. So that is, folks can go out and see their specific amount, two-thirds of their wages plus the $600 federal weekly unemployment benefit.
I guess what I'm wondering, if their average salary on these folks is $692 a week, this would be a pay, for most of these folks, it sounds like there would be a pay increase to take the furlough. Am I, am I missing something here?
Nope.
It's true. Okay. Well, that's, that's certainly interesting. Just want to make sure I understand also, this is not financially driven by us. This is preemptive, if you will, assuming that we're going to have revenue shortfalls in the future based on income tax, property tax, and sales tax changes in the, in the, in the community. But right now, these folks are, have budgeted salary that the. now, these folks are, have budgeted salary, that the money is in the, in the, in our, in our accounts right now to pay these folks. But we're anticipating potentially some future financial challenges, potentially because of what's going on. Is that fair?
Yeah, it's fair. There's, there's three reasons. First of all, if people aren't, if, if people aren't busy, if we're having a hard time filling a 40-hour week, then I think it just makes, money aside, it just makes sense to look at furlough. I think we are trying to be preemptive in what we anticipate is going to be a very challenging year on, on revenue. And I think a third component is, we need to mirror the community to some degree as government. And the community right now is struggling. There are a lot of furloughs out there. There are a lot of job stoppages. And I think it's prudent for us as an organization to mirror the community. So those were the three global factors that we talked about as we move forward.
One thing I asked, I think at last meeting, I, I believe we still ought to try to get a snapshot of what's happening with our salary, our budget for salary in terms of overtime, if there's FMLA cost, because people might be taking, that two thirds of their salary is paid out of the county, if I understand correctly, if they're taking FMLA under that, whatever it's called, the new federal mandate on that. So I guess I'd like to know, you know, basically, you know, compared to our budget, our budget plan, how's our salary doing currently? Can we get a snapshot of how that is performing? It would be very helpful.
And, and I can actually speak to that. So our payroll folks this morning sent the payroll results for this most recent payroll period. We are less than 1% over the 2020 average, and we're actually, on the whole through 2020, less than we were on an average payroll period basis in 2019. And you'll actually also get your monthly financial report today, and you'll see that salary and wages and benefits compared for the first quarter of 2019 to the first quarter of 2020 are basically flat, went up, I think roughly $30,000 overall. A lot of that is because we do have some higher level positions that are vacant. But so far, we're not seeing a tremendous impact, one way or the other, good or bad, on COVID-19 or the FML effects.
All right. Thank you very much. That's all my questions.
Okay. Any other questions? So you would, we want to entertain a motion that we approve this furlough program?
Yes, sir.
As stated?
I'll, I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner.
Can I have one question real fast?
Sure. Commissioner Cruz.
So in regards to Calm Care, what, that pilot program that was in the schools, what are those, where, where were those employees out of? Was that, is that out of the school? Who employs those?
Those were Cedric County Calm Care employees.
Okay. So, and maybe this doesn't have anything to do with it.
And here comes Tim.
Okay, sweet. My question is, are we still, you know, with kids being home, are those counselors checking up on those children?
Yes, Commissioner. We've done a tremendous job within Calm Care, I think across the organization, in shifting service delivery models. And we have done a lot of televideo right now. We do some telephonic, but we're doing televideo wherever it's possible. And so we've got engagement between those therapists and kids. They're doing, the kids are getting their schooling at home, but they're still connected to their therapist and their case manager.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay. I'll second the motion. There'd been a motion on the floor. I'll second it. Is there any other comments?
Just one final question. I don't know who can answer this, but I'm curious at the state level, is there's a CARES Act reimbursed the state for the cost of the additional unemployment insurance cost to the state? Or how, how does the state handle, most of this is going to go on them, I suppose. I'm just more curious than anything.
So Commissioner, the expanded, the emergency sick leave and the expanded FML, is that what you're referring to?
Well, these folks are going to be-
Or the $600.
Well, both. The, the additional unemployment insurance and the $600 per week. I was curious, where's the source of those money?
So that is the federal government that is funding that $600 payment. And that is not going to be anything the state is expected to pay. For the additional emergency sick leave and expanded FML, any county, well, any government with at least one employee is required to provide that. And right now, there is no reimbursement anywhere for those dollars to any government.
All right. That's, that's great. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. Mr. Manager, can you speak to how we have handled the slowdown in the workload with the current employees? I did receive a couple of questions about why would we be doing this, if there are other things that could be done. Specifically, it was filing and cleaning and all these other kinds of things. Would you just speak to that?
Sure. And it goes back to Commissioner Dennis's point earlier in the meeting. Once the decision was made in mid-March to shut down facility and, and some operations, and as Tim has alluded to, we've done some shifting organization within departments to continue to take care of business. It's, it's taken a couple of weeks to watch as this has continued to evolve, where the slowdowns or the stress in the organizations are happening. And so we've had constant communication. And, and again, let me preface, we've, we tried to send as many people home who could do 100% of capacity teleworking, and we have those positions. But the, for the remainder, who don't have 40 hours a week of teleworking, or who are in this building who don't have 40 hours a week, this is now, we're to the point, we're in deep enough, we're in four weeks in, and we can see where those points are at. It is a constant decision, and it's going to continue to be a constant discussion, particularly as Adrian's world shifts with what happens with testing, with what maybe happens with, now we have to have more contact callers. We will continue to move pieces around organizationally that can help subsidize that, so to speak, if it matches a, a skillset. It's, it's, it sounds easy to move people around to help the sheriff, or to help EMS, or to help health. It's very difficult, because you have to look at what skillsets they bring to the table. And it's not that we just want to set a body there for the sake of setting a body there. We want it to be able to perform and function. And we've done that on, in a number of positions, organizationally already. As we move forward, we will always look to our employees first. If they have the skillset, if they have the, the talent to go do contact calling, for example, or we can train them up to do that, we will use them first. But if they cannot, or are unwilling to, don't feel comfortable doing that, then we may actually have, have to look at going out and hiring some temporary help to get that done, to get us through this process. So it, it's a long answer to a very good question, Commissioner, but every day, we look at this, every week as a leadership team, we talk about it, and we're trying to be as strategic as possible. And, and we all don't have any data either a lot. So we're, we're trying to do the best we can in a pretty fluid, dynamic situation. And we will continue to that for the next several months. It's not going to end in the next week or two, we know. So we'll continue that probably the remainder of 2020.
Okay. Any other questions? Been a motion and a second on the floor. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hal?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Thank you, Sheena. Appreciate it. And Lindsey, thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item E, discussion regarding property taxes.
Property taxes. Okay, we're having a discussion regarding property taxes.
Mr. Chairman, Mike Papun, County Councilor, I'll be presenting this, or at least beginning of this. As you're all aware, this coronavirus pandemic has had, been a hardship for a number of our citizens and families in Cedric County. And as a result of, and I might wait a minute, we're going to have a number of other people calling into this meeting to help with the discussion. I know Lindsey is here present. Brent Shelton, I think, will be calling in. I think our county treasurer, Lynda Kozier, will be calling in. Legal counsel that works a lot with the county treasurer and the tax sales, Chris Mackelgan is also available to help with this discussion. And, and in the follow-up discussion we'll have on another matter, I think we have the county appraiser, Mark Clark, and, and Trish, Trish Parker, who is the lawyer. I'm getting a little echo from you to hear. Okay.
Hello? This is Mark Clark.
Mark, everybody needs to mute their phones, please. And I believe in a follow-up discussion that we'll have. Mr. Clark and Trish Parker will also be available. But as I said, that all of you have been receiving, I know inquiries from different people and organizations about what tax, kinds of tax relief can be given with respect to, first discussion we'll have, whether or not we can, and what some people confusingly talk about delaying the second half payment of their property taxes, which is really a forgiveness of interest for those taxes due on May 11. And then the second topic we'll talk about, and allow you guys to talk about, is there's, there's, I know in Johnson County, they've done this, whether or not the county appraisers should relax the deadline for appealing, the time for appealing your taxes and the informal hearing process for the 2020 taxes. The first topic that we'll talk about is the issue that, again, I think we've all been approached about what we can do in terms of giving some relief to taxpayers on the second half payment, which this year is due May 11. And I will please anybody else that's, that's here listening too, can, can weigh in at any time, but I'll try to give what I understand the issue is. Those taxes beyond May, people have to still meet that deadline. We don't know that the governor has the authority to waive that deadline. But taxes that are not paid by May 11 start to accrue interest. And we have, I have some specific information too, on the different interest rates that taxpayers are subject to. We have been approached to, for some indeterminate amount of time, whether it be 30, 60, 90 days, to allow taxpayers not to pay that second half payment. We have discussed this with a number of the people within our organization, our CFO, Lindsey, and her deputy, Brent, Brent Shelton. If Lynda Kozier is listening, I think it's been a pretty firm position on the part of the county treasurer, that she doesn't want to forgive any interest for payments made beyond that, beyond that date. But, but that's what we're being asked to do. That's what you're being asked to do as a commission, to take whatever action you can take. And I know some county commissioners here want to, want to address this. And I will turn that over to anybody else on the commission that wants to talk, unless somebody listening in or wants to add, add something to this discussion at this time.
Okay. Well, I know it's been brought to our attention for a couple of county commissioners, so maybe county commission can weigh in originally. And if we have any questions, then we can, from any of you that are on the, on the phone, if you, you can unmute if it's addressed to you, or if you need to add to that. So anybody want to start? Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I definitely don't mind starting. I've been, been pushing to do something on delaying taxes. As we all know, it's an appropriate day to be speaking about this, since it is tax day. But what we saw the federal government do was delaying the tax, federal tax day until July. And then Governor Laura Kelly also extended the state income taxes to match the federal. So I had a lot of individuals ask if the county was going to delay our collection of property taxes. Based on knowledge that I've received and information I've received from Mr. Papun, we don't have the ability, as the county commission, because of state statute, to actually uniformly delay collection of property taxes. That, that's in state statute. As Mr. Papun mentioned earlier, May 11 is the, the day that property taxes are due, and the dispersment will be in early June from our treasurer's office. What I would like to see us do as a commission is to let people know that it's still due. We know at least a third of property taxes, taxes are paid in escrow. So those are already being paid right now. But for individuals that own their homes, a lot of seniors in my district, I've also heard from other people that might own some rental properties, and their tenants aren't able to pay their rent, that they would like a delay as they're letting their tenants that have been laid off delay 30 days or 60 days. So that's what I'd look for. I've been somewhat shocked at how high the interest rate is on late taxes. So if you don't pay your taxes on time, the, the interest rate is 11% for property taxes under $10,000, and 15% for property taxes over $10,000. That, those are, those are huge, huge taxes, particularly when interest rates are at historic lows in America, that the county would collect that. And the other thing that I learned through this process is, the county keeps all that money. So it is not shared with the city or the school district. So we wouldn't be taking these interest fees from anybody else. They would just be, it would be an internal hit that we would be taking on that. But, but I, I'm just shocked at how high our interest rates are on that. So I, I just think it's a discussion we need to have, because people are hurting right now. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So the, the interest that's collected is a county revenue stream.
That's what I understand.
But a delay, people that don't pay their taxes, using this delay and choosing to pay the, or if the interest waiver not, but if they delay, then the money is delayed to all the taxing authorities besides just Cedric County? Okay. Any else got any comments so far?
Thank you, Chairman. Just wanted to echo the comments of Commissioner O'Donnell. It is interesting that the, the interest rate is set by state statute. And back in 2016, it was down to 4%. It has climbed from 4% to 11% over the last few years. I don't quite know what caused that to happen. So I guess I'd like to challenge the state to review their interest rate. Seems like there ought to be some type of a trigger that adjusts that rate, whether it's based on interest rates that are happening else, you know, elsewhere, or if there's a amount of delinquency that's happening in counties that ought to maybe trigger the interest rate, so that we can hopefully encourage, I guess, payment of taxes. But regardless, 11% is very, very high. To me, there's like four pieces of this discussion. I don't know if that helps or not. But, and whether or not, whether or not the county has authority, or the governor has the authority, or the legislature has the authority, that's really been the, the question is, what do we have the authority over? One of the, one of the topics has been moving, moving the, the appraised values back to 2019. That would make a lot of people really happy. And I don't know if we have the authority to do that, but that's been suggested. To me, that would be the easiest thing for us to do, would be, would basically make the appeals process unnecessary, because I believe 81%, I think, of the properties had an increase of value, averaging 6% this year. That would probably, would solve most of the problem. But I think what Commissioner O'Donnell just talked about was interest on late payments. The, the payments are due on May the 10th. If we push that back 60, 90, you know, 60 days, for example, whether or not we could waive, waive that interest. I don't know if we have the authority, or who has the authority, but I would certainly be interested in that. And there's also the due dates, I think, that Mike Papun just talked about, talked about, to request an appeal or to conduct the appeal. The request, the appeal was 30 days, which I think ended, ended at the end of March. If, if additional time is necessary for that, I would like to maybe have, you know, have that on the table, things to talk, things to talk about. And then, of course, Mark Clark, I think, would talk about conducting those appeals, whether or not there's more time necessary to conduct the appeals. I think his position has been, he was able to fit them all into the calendar, and there's not a problem to get the appeals completed that were requested. And then finally, the, the payment due date, being May the 10th, whether we could push that back to some other date or not, that was part of the discussion. I think these are all very interesting ideas. I'd support any of them. I just don't know what, what we have the authority to do. So it comes down to the issue of authority, I think.
Okay. Can we, let's keep this moving on. There's, yeah, I'd had five items, and let's check them off. If we have no authority, then check them off. And if we have authority on all five of them, then we need to hear that.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, back to Commissioner Hal's point, I was going to separate these two discussions, and we'll get to the next discussion you were talking about. But regarding this, just some follow-up information. Johnson County considered this, rejected the idea they had the authority to delay the interest, or delay payment of the interest. The governor has, as Commissioner O'Donnell has pointed out, that issued- The governor has, as Commissioner O'Donnell has pointed out, that issued a couple of executive The governor has taken action to delay both the tax, tax payment to July 15th and a 60-day extension of driver license renewals and registrations, but I'm not sure the governor has the authority to, to waive the payment of interest, but that's for her and her counsel to look at. But this, this does affect a lot of other taxing districts. That's one of the practical considerations. I think the manager has, has done some research there, because if these payments aren't made by, by the May 11th date, that's going to affect the distribution to the other taxing districts in the county that come, that comes in June. And, and they've already been given a preliminary, preliminary amount that they're supposed to receive, so just a couple other considerations.
Okay, but Mike, can you help us? He had, Commissioner Howell had five things that he wanted to throw out there. I need, some may be relevant, some may not be relevant to this proposal that's on the desk. Rev, rev, okay, I'll, I'll help. Going back to 19, is that, is that relevant to this discussion?
Well, we've already looked at that discussion. We've heard from a high-ranking member of the legislature telling us we couldn't do it. Trish Parker in my office has researched that, said that we couldn't do that without a legislative change. I assume the legislator that's told us about this was getting advice from the Attorney General about the fact that this would have to take legislative action. So no, we can't, we can't go back to 2019.
Let's take that one off the table. How about the next one? What, what you want to know about Mark Clark moving the, the appeal process?
Well, there's the, the 30-day window to request an appeal, and then, of course, to complete the appeals. Those are two different things.
Okay, Mark, Mark, can you, Mark, can you address that?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Mark Clark, county appraiser. I did not request, I did not give an extension for putting an additional time in for the 30-day deadline. In fact, our office was already scheduling appeals into the month of May when, even before the 30 days was up. Currently, we have 5,566 appeals. Last year, we had 3,881. That's a 43.4% increase. My staff really hasn't increased any, and so we're, we're getting it done. We've got them all scheduled in there, but there is no more time there. And looking at this, the director of PVD, if I was to extend that based on what I've said, already scheduling into the month of May, I would have to get the director of PVD to extend the time to do those appeals, and then he would have to extend the time to get the result letters out. That would have an impact on the certification date of June 1. And the PVE, PVD director said before he would ever extend that, he would require the Sedgwick County BOCC to vote on a resolution to move the certification deadline. Because, yes, your county commissioners for Sedgwick County, however, there are many other taxing jurisdictions within the, the boundaries of the county, and they could be adversely impacted. Cities, schools, school districts, townships, and other taxing authorities depend on a timely certification of values in order to meet their budget publication and public meeting deadlines. And so by me doing that, I am having an adverse impact on them. I understand that there are people who still want to appeal, however, they still had the same 30 days as everyone else, and they still have another avenue to appeal, and that will be the payment of the protest.
Okay.
I do see, realize that Johnson County did put an extension out, and I've looked at that, went onto their website, that is only for residential appeals. It does not include commercial or anything else. And also remember, appeals are not based on current economic conditions, but rather of fair market value as of January 1 of 2020.
Okay, thank you, Mark, for helping.
Thank you.
So, so at this point, if we wanted to take that up, we would have to have a vote to, to do that, and you saw the impact. We can make a, we could talk about that. I'm not, I, if we just get into that now, there's 90 taxing authorities in Sedgwick County, and Sedgwick County is 25, 28% of the revenue. How much are we on the taxing? Lindsay, can you help us?
24.
Okay, so Sedgwick County is 24% of the, of the taxes that are collect, the property taxes that are collected. The other 90 are the 20 cities, including Derby, Clearwater, all of the cities in the county, so they would be adversely impacted. I can't remember how many school districts, seven or eight or nine. There's also however many townships. So we can talk further about this, but I, it's going to be a real stretch for me to support telling all of these communities that, that have already weighed in, many of them weighed in and saying this would adversely affect them, and I don't, I don't, based on what Mark said about that, everything else, I mean, we can, we can continue to dialogue, but if we had 30 of those entities, 10 of those entities say, yeah, I agree, this would be good, we're okay with that, but we haven't had one entity say it's okay. So that's where I'm at right now, and we can talk more, but we don't have a motion on the floor yet to vote for or against anyway. Mr. Howell?
Yeah, so again, what Mark was talking about was the appeals process, and that, I think he spoke very well about that. The other two issues, of course, is whether we can change the date, the due date. I don't know that we can do that, but currently it's May 10th. I think the one that Commissioner O'Donnell's been talking about, which I think is the only thing that's really left, is whether or not we can waive the interest on late payments. If someone is delinquent, it would, it would affect those taxing subdivisions if they're delinquent. But if you, if you don't change the due date, I think majority of people probably would still pay on time, and those that can't pay for whatever reason would be subject to the interest penalty. But the question, I think, before us is then, can we, can we somehow waive off all or a portion of the interest penalty for delinquent payments? And that's, I think, the question that's really the most compelling discussion today. Again, it comes down to the issue of authority. I don't know what we have the authority to do.
Mr. Stoltz, go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Stoltz, lay in.
Chairman, Chairman, I just want to, Treasurer Kazire is texting me. She would like a shot to talk when you deem it appropriate, sir.
Mr. Linda? You want, or, Linda, can you hold on just a second? Commissioner O'Donnell wants to say something.
Yeah. So what I think we need to focus on, like Commissioner Howell said, people are still going to pay their bill if they're in a fine economic situation. What we are dealing with is a lot of uncertainty, a lot of problems. People that don't own their homes, those property taxes are in escrow. So, and, and we know that's at least a third of, of all the tax bills that went out. So it might be a little bit of a temporary hit for these cities, but they're still going to get, in my estimation, well over half of the money. The only issue is the way the dispersments are. So even though they're due May 11th, they don't get that until the 1st of June. And then all the late payments and stuff that come in over that next three months, they get their next dispersment in September. So whatever they don't get, even if people make a late payment 30 days later, the cities and the school districts won't get that payment for 90 days. I, I acknowledge that, that's not ideal. But I also acknowledge the fact that when the governor's telling landlords that you can't evict somebody, even if they don't pay, they're paying property taxes, but they're not bringing in money. And I think this gives a lot more breathing room for people that are renters, and I also think people that own their own homes, this gives them a little bit of time as well if they have been laid off or waiting on unemployment and other things to kick in. I, I just feel like the governor and the, the federal government have given delays. I just think we need to look to see what we can do to give a delay as well. But, but I understand if we can't, if we legally can't do that, I understand, but I do think we need to try.
Okay. Linda, hold on one more second. Commissioner Cruz, please.
Sorry, thank you. Thank you, Linda, for your patience. Mr. Manager, could you speak to, I think, understanding the time that we're in right now, absolutely, if there's something that we can do, let's do it. But at the end of the day, if we don't keep all, we don't keep 100% of this money for ourselves, and would there be any potential litigation by us not dispersing funds or us taking an action for another taxing entity? Can you speak to, or can some?
Let me, let me, I'm going to answer the first half of that, and I'm going to look at Mike Papoun to, to answer culpability or liability on the county. Based on, at the direction of Commissioner O'Donnell, he wanted to know last week what other cities or taxing recipients would feel about this. So I put an email out to about five or six of the class two and three cities, Derby, Clearwater included, Mays, City Wichita, of course, and a couple of others, Bel Air, and also to Superintendent Thompson with USD 259. All of them, with the exception of City Wichita, Mr. Layton has not, they were actually giving due diligence and working through some numbers, so I haven't not heard back from him. But all of the others responded negatively. They, they would not support this. Manager Sexton in Derby actually forwarded it to her, the Derby School District Superintendent, who also replied back to me, she would not be in favor of it. Bel Air was the only entity of those that I polled that said that they thought they could do a 60-day, up to a 60-day deferral and probably be okay budgetarily, but the rest did, did not say so. Mike, I don't know if there's any.
Oh, just very quickly, Mr. Manager and Commissioner Cruz, you can never say definitively what the legal, what could legal consequences would be in this case, but I will say Johnson County very publicly took the position they legally didn't have the authority to do it. The Attorney General has ruled in an, in an opinion that interest was part of the taxes, and you couldn't, as a body, waive, waive those taxes. So, and you never know who, who would sue us or who couldn't, but there's certainly some grounds for a cause of action if, I mean, municipality thought that they weren't getting the appropriate share of their tax money. I'll say that.
Okay, we have Linda Kazire on, standing by. Linda, you're on. She's the county treasurer. Linda, you might be muted.
Good morning, thank you. Those taxing districts would not receive. They would not receive their next distribution until September 18th, and that's quite a ways out from June 5th, it's 100-plus days. I know a lot of those entities, we send an estimate to them saying, you know, here's an approximation of what you're going to get, and if, if there's this cut by half or two-thirds, they're already struggling because of sales tax being down and several other items that we're not collecting as much revenue on. The casino is a good example. Chairman, or Chairman Mike, sorry, I sent you guys the casino revenue for March, which was less than half of the month before.
Right.
And, you know, we, we, our system is just not designed. Every one of these adjustments has to be done manually. We don't have a, a way to reprogram that. I mean, we'd have to pay the vendor to reprogram it for all the parcels, and it could cause an issue if we're just waiving the interest for second half. Well, what if I haven't paid my first half? Are you going to waive all the interest? Are we going to continue to just not charge interest? And, and I think it's going to be very costly for us to even ask our vendor to look at changing how we can post our payments. And the 11% interest is over the 12-month period, so it's like 0.92% a month for interest. It's not 11% a month. It's less than 1% a month. And I just, I, I'm very opposed to this. I'm, I'm sorry for people that are contacting you that are struggling, but we went through the recession in 2009, and we did not do anything like this. We did not, and we had massive layoffs then also. But we did not adjust interest at that point in time. We did not extend tax dates. So I'm just trying to wrap my head around what is the big difference between the prior recession and this one?
Okay, Linda, thank you. Okay, any other, any other comments? Bring it. Being done, is there a, a motion that we're supposed to consider?
There is no recommended action, Mr. Chairman, so the board can receive and file or do whatever other action that an individual commissioner might want.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I guess I have a question. So I think, I think the leaving the, the due date May, May the 10th is still, is fine. I think most people are going to, going to honor that if they possibly can, but I would like to deal with the, those that have trouble, you know, being able to, to suspend, if you will, the, the penalty for 60 days. And I don't know how else to say it, but I think that for anybody who has, is, I'm not sure it matters if they're current or not, I think it should matter. If they're current on their taxes and they're simply having trouble this time, I'd like to waive the, the, the penalty of interest for 60 days. To me, that would be, that would be reasonable, so I'd like to make that motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, there's a motion, a second. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you. Well, I've received the same emails that everyone else has that are upset about the new valuation of 2020, and I can understand that. We've asked if we could roll those back to 2019, and we find out that it requires legislative action. I've gotten the emails that say, hey, let's delay payment for 60 days, 90 days, whatever. And that brings up the question absolutely, that what happens with the people that are, didn't pay in December? What happens with the people that didn't pay a year ago? What happens with the people that didn't pay two years ago? Though their, their interests have been accruing all along. We, we are one, less than one-fourth of the total amount, and we've heard from the other governments. Now, we're going to be the ones to take the heat because of this motion. The other governments aren't going to take any of the heat. We've got 90 other organizations out there that are, are receiving taxes, and this can be delayed as far as September the 18th if, if this passes. So I, I think it's a great thing if we could find some way of relieving the tax burden on, on our, our citizens. That is a fantastic idea. The way that we're going about it is not a fantastic idea. It's, it's a good thing, I'm up for election in August. I could, it would be wonderful if I could go up and say, hey, this is, well, look what I did for you. I rolled your taxes back. It's a great campaign, but it's not fiscally responsible. It's not responsible to the other governments. It's a bad idea. I, I wish that there was some way I could say it was a good idea, because I, I feel the pain that each of these citizens are looking at each and every day trying to, to make these payments. But at the same time, if, if it's a bad idea for the other, other government... But at the same time, if, if it's a bad idea for the other, other governments, why is it a good idea for us to put them in that position? So unfortunately, I would love to vote for your motion, and I understand why you made it, that it's a good thing to do for our citizens, but I can't support it. Thank you.
Okay, just a minute. Ms. Kazire wants to weigh in real quick. Linda Kazire, you got a comment? Linda? Kazire? You're muted. Unmute. We'll go back to Michael.
Yes, please.
Okay, Linda, how are you?
I'm good. How are you?
You have a comment, I understand.
Well, I just hope that everybody understands that our system, our tax system, is not capable of just eliminating the interest. And thank you, Chairman Dennis, for reiterating what if people were late a couple of years? What are we going to do then? What if they're in the tax foreclosure and they've got four years' worth of interest? Are we going to wipe all that clean? I really, I think we're opening Pandora's box if we pick and choose who's going to pay interest and who isn't. Because I, I just think that we're making a, a big mistake on even considering reducing interest. And as I've said, it's going to be a manual process. We don't have the capability within the current tax system to just do them all. We can't just do a one-size-fits-all. So it'll be a manual process on each and every PIN number, and it'll have to be done via C of E, which will involve us, the county clerk, and the county appraiser. And that's a lot of extra work, and I think Mark is still on the call, so if he wants to weigh in on C of E's, correction of errors, and how long it would take. And actually, the interest becomes a part of the tax bill once it is placed on there. So I just want to make sure that that's brought up also, Pete.
Okay. Thank you, Linda.
That's all I have.
All right. Thank you.
This is Mark Clark. I can tell you that Linda is correct, that the correction of error process for that particular methodology would be rather lengthy. It would, it would be lots of work.
Okay. Thank you, Mark. And everybody can remute. We're back to the, to the commission. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I, I think part of the discussion that Commissioner Howell had was that these are for people that were current on their taxes. So anybody that's in delinquency, foreclosure, that's late, that didn't pay their taxes last year, that they wouldn't qualify for this. So I, I understand there will be some administration that, that might be a little tricky, but I also understand right now there's so much going on in the community. Also, and Lindsay might be able to answer this, aren't local governments required to have some type of an ending balance or reserve fund or rainy day fund? Because I know we, we personally have plenty of reserves.
Lindsay Povrso, so there is, you can't violate cash basis law, which essentially means you can't go insolvent. And so, yes, that almost certainly means you need to have some cash in the bank to carry forward into next year, but there's no, like, statutory minimum balance that you have to carry forward. We do have a minimum balance by policy, and so many governments probably do have that, but statutorily, no, we don't have an obligation to have a specific amount in the bank.
Yeah. The state does, but of course, that gets violated quite frequently and, and, but generally, it takes some type of vote from the Finance Council or whatever to, to dip below that. But I, I was under the impression there was some type of, and maybe it is just the cash basis for government accounting, that they have to have a certain amount of money in there, but, but I, I definitely feel like the quote-unquote rainy day funds, I, I think universally we'd all agree that rainy days are here in America, and if this isn't a rainy day, I don't know what is. So, thank you.
Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. Just wanted to ask if anybody can answer this question, but Executive Order 2010 deals with the evictions prohibition. That does not apply in any way to commercial properties. Is that correct? It's only for residential properties?
I would have to look at that again, Commissioner, but.
That's what Justin said earlier.
I believe that's correct.
I believe it is correct.
Assuming that is correct, again, I think, I think Commissioner O'Donnell makes a very compelling point. We, we've put our business owners, business owners in a very difficult position. We've, we've, we've caused them to shut down. We've caused them to, to not receive payment from people who are using their properties. And I guess my point would be, to me, there ought to be some grace allowed. I understand our system is clunky. It's not going to be easy to handle administratively, but I think that's a challenge we need to solve. And I'm not talking about people who are delinquent for even, even last December's payment. If they're, if they're current, but they're struggling right now, we ought to accommodate them. We've created, through lots of decisions that governments made, a very awkward position for many, many people. This is a small thing we can do. It's 60 days. Talking about suspending the penalty for 60 days. If they are simply having trouble getting the payment out on May 10th, we would have a little bit of grace. I think we can, we can, we can handle it. I think that the motion should pass. Thank you.
And how do we know who is having struggle or not? Who weighs in on who has struggle or not?
We, we don't. We're going to have to assume if they're, if they need the 60 days, they'll take what days they need.
With my, my brief comment is, I, I know the motion and the second has been made, and I would have a lot more validity in the motion. I understand all the emotion about all this, and, and I, of course, wants to help. I don't want to say that I'm, feel more sorry than, than others. I mean, it's, we all have this struggle, but I, I would have a lot more validity with this motion if the two, the motion and the second, actually physically talked to their fellow electives that represent the districts they have. And if those cities and those, and those taxing agencies, if you talked to them directly and they said, yeah, I'm in, then that's got validity to it.
I can say I did talk to Jeff Blubow, and he's my city council member.
Okay.
He loves it.
All right. He's in. That's one.
Very strongly supportive of it.
Exactly.
Let's be clear, we're talking about.
Did you talk to Clearwater? Did you talk to, did you talk to Derby?
No. Let's be clear, we're talking about a delinquency. We're not talking about waiving off the payment date.
It's their money. It's 75% of this is their money. 25% is, 24% is us.
Here's what's going to happen.
76% is theirs.
If they don't have the revenue to pay their payment, they're not going to pay it. And that's, we're, we're going to see a lot, a lot of delinquencies this time, and those, those interest payments will be assessed, and we're going to collect that money here at the county.
Like 2009?
Right. I, so again, whether the cities get the revenue or not, that's, we'll, we'll see what happens when people don't make the payments. They're going to get impacted already anyway.
Okay.
We're only talking about the interest, so.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. I, for, for me, I have to echo Commissioner Dennis's comments as far as being fiscally responsible. For me, there's too many variables here. It feels like we're, we're talking about something that really isn't concrete as far as how is somebody going to prove a hardship? I mean, could we have people take advantage of this? The, the other part is the need to consult with our other elected officials and our ever, our other governmental agencies. I mean, that, I think, is the biggest thing for me and why I can't support this today, because there's too many variables. I feel like you guys are writing it as you go right here. I mean, we've known about this all week. We could have presented something that was laid out in a concrete form that says, this is how it's going to go. This is what I'd like to make a motion. I just don't think that that's been done, and there was time to do that, so that, that's where I stand on this.
Commissioner Dennis?
Well, I understand that Commissioner O'Donnell contacted Jeff Blubow, but he's a realtor and he has financial gain from this. I, I don't know that Jeff Blubow speaks for the city of Wichita.
I didn't say.
So I think that we truly, if we're going to make a rational decision, we need feedback in writing from every one of these other governments that want to put in their position on this. We, we should not be making a decision for 90 other governments today. So I make a motion that we defer this for one week so that we can get input from the other governments before we make a final decision.
Is that a substitute motion, you mean?
That's a substitute motion.
I'll second that. Okay, there's a, a substitute motion to delay a week to get more information directly?
I'll, I'll absolutely support that. I mean, May 11th, there will still be time before the May 11th due date, so, so I don't feel like we're in a position where we have to get it done today. So I'm, I'm absolutely supportive of that.
Okay. Yes, sir.
I'll also support the substitute motion, but I just want to be really clear. We're not talking about changing the revenue due date, still May, May 10th. And if someone's delinquent, this is, we're only talking about the money that's, that's due to the county. The interest payment to the county is all we're talking about. This is going to impact the county by waiving 60 days' worth of interest. That, that alone should not impact the cities, but I'm glad to, to support the substitute motion.
Okay, so the substitute motion is to delay a week based on getting direct feedback from all the other taxing entities. Correct?
Correct.
Any other comment? Being none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meister?
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item F, consideration of one item for procurement.
Hello, Mr. Joe. Welcome to the commission meeting.
Good morning, Commissioners. Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. We have one item to recommend for approval today, and that item is a Road Improvement Project R 351, which is 55th Street South and Meridian. And this recommendation is to, is to accept the low bid from Conspec Incorporated. They're doing business as Kansas Paving, and this is in the amount of $435,404. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval.
Yes, Howell?
Is she calling David Spears?
Mr. Spears is on the line, Commissioner.
Okay. There's questions? Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think everyone's familiar with this project, the 55th and Meridian project. If David's on the line, David, tell everybody how much this project's coming in under budget.
Commissioner O'Donnell, this project originally started out over $1 million, and we worked with Hayesville School District and were able to change the scope of the project down, and we received four excellent bids last week. And originally, Hayesville School District was going to pay in special assessment on the turn lanes, about $530,000, and with this bid, they will end up now paying $150,000. We're, we're absolutely thrilled about this, and the other nice thing is, with school being canceled this year, we were going to start this and do it in the summertime, and I think this is the other factor why we got a good bid on it. We're now going to start at the beginning of May instead of the end of May, and that the contractor won't be squeezed so hard to get it done by the time school starts in the fall. So I think that, that also helps. So we sort of made lemonade out of lemons.
Yeah, yeah, but just the fact that we're, we're saving hundreds of thousands of dollars on the bid is, is good news for us and, and the, the school district, Mr. Spears. So thank you and your staff. I know Jim Weber's been involved as well on that. And, Mr. Chairman, if it's time to make a motion, I move that we approve the recommendation of the Purchasing Department and Bid Proposal Review Committee.
Second. Has been motion in a second. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meister?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Joe.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Good morning again, Chairman. Commissioners Tom Stoles, County Manager, recommend approval of consent items G through L this morning.
Okay.
So moved?
Second.
Been a motion in a second for consent items G through L. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meister?
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item.
Legislative issues.
Mr. Papoun, we've had a lot of legislative discussion already, but.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm obviously not going to neglect this matter again. I talked to our lobbyist, Mr. Watkins, this week and to get his feel of what's going on up, up in the Capitol, and basically, we're in the same situation we've been for the last few weeks. The legislature was supposed to look at convening in late April. Dr. Norman is telling them that he doesn't think that the peak is probably going to happen with the coronavirus until April 26th at earliest, and probably would need a couple of weeks after that before they'd even think of convening in Topeka, but nobody really knows at this point, at least the leadership people he's talked to, nobody knows when they're coming back or if they're coming back at this point. I think as alluded to earlier by Justin, I, we do know that this afternoon at 3:00, the State Finance Council is going to meet, and that is the entity that triggers whether or not the Legislative Coordinating Council can reduce any of the authority that the governor has in her emergency orders and her stay-at-home orders and, and such. So that is happening at 3:00, and that's made up of essentially the same, same individuals that were part of the Legislative Coordinating Council, plus the governor, plus the lead, the chair of the different appropriations committee, Ways and Means and House Appropriations. So they'll be meeting at 3:00, and, and unless this group authorizes the governor to extend her emergency order for another 30 days, all of these orders will be for not, because she needs, by the joint resolution adopted by the legislature and that she agreed, she agreed to, it will take extended action by this council for her emergency orders to take place. But having said that, I believe that Justin, after he left the meeting earlier today, found out that the governor is announcing a 2:00 press conference today to make the point that she is planning on extending her, her stay-at-home orders beyond the current deadline. So that's what we have from, from Topeka. Sorry, there's no more action that I can report on.
Okay. Thanks, Mike. Appreciate it.
Okay.
Any questions? Okay. Madam Clerk, next item.
Other?
Other. Does anybody, any Commissioners have other? Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. Yesterday afternoon, we had our WAMPO meeting, and it was conducted by Go-To Meetings or something. It was virtual, which was kind of cool. But the, the part that I wanted to bring up is that in the past, the way that the state has done all of their funding is that we have a fiscally constrained budget to the projects that WAMPO can send forward to the state and ask for funding on. But this year, the state, and, and I think thankful that we've got Julia Renz as our Secretary of Transportation that's helping us out an awful lot, they added a couple, another way that we could send projects in that we want in the, to be thinking about if money ever becomes available, which is a great way of thinking. And so what does that mean to us? First of all, the fiscally constrained projects that we approved yesterday at WAMPO was in 2025, starting to buy more Northwest Bypass right away for about $83 million. I-235 expansion from 54 to the zoo, starting in 2031 for $274 million. 54 and 400 Expansion West, starting in 2031, is almost $600 million. The Gold Phase of the North Junction, and also the Gold Phase, several phases of that, the gold and the purple in 2021, and that's, oh, there's three different projects there, about $400 million. US 54 and Washington Street Modernization, starting at 2031 for $105 million. The Blue Phase and the Green Phase of 235 and Kellogg, starting in 2021 and 2024, which is about $200 million, a little. is about $200 million, a little over that. 400 Expansion Going East, starting in 2025, is about $375, almost $375 million. I-135 and 54 Northbound and the Southbound Lanes, in 2021, about $19 million. Those were the ones that are nonroutine and fiscally constrained projects, and we approved putting them onboard. But they also said, hey, you can have an illustrative list of things that are really you want in your community, but we don't have the money for. But if it becomes available, here's some other things that we've got, we want to do. Northwest Bypass Utilities Relocation in 2031 of about $38 million. Northwest Bypass Construction, starting in 2031, of $761 million. I-235 from Zuda Seneca in 2031 for $330 million. And the Northwest Bypass, the final design review, starting in 2025, for about $13 million. So those were all good news items that came out of WAMPO yesterday, and they will have a significant impact on our community if we can move forward with them. But it does show some great leadership coming out of Topeka that allows us to say these are some of our priorities that we've got in our community that are going to impact what we do in the future. So I just wanted to report on what WAMPO did yesterday.
Okay. Thank you for the update. Yeah, I was on the call as well, so. Okay. Anybody else have anything? Okay. Being none, Madam Clerk, next item.
Executive session.
Commissioner Cruz?
I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 20 minutes until 12:15 for consultation with an attorney for the county regarding matters deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship in order to discuss pending litigation and legal advice concerning certain duties and obligations. And that the Board of County Commissioners returns to, or we were staying in this room for the next 20 minutes, and we will resume at 12:15.
I'll second that. Motion and second for executive session. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
We are now suspended. Till then.
Resist.
Resist. Executive session.
An hour that we could, it could have been an hour ago. Can you signal when we're on?
He's on the phone trying to get KPTS back up.
Are you making the motion?
Well, I'll say that we're back in session, we're back in order. We still have the one item. Do we want to cover the one item?
Not now. We'll do it the second, after the second.
Okay, good afternoon. The Cedric County Board of Commission is back in session. No action taken, but Commissioner Cruz.
I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session again for 10 minutes until 12:32.
I'll second.
Twelve twenty-nine.
What did I say?
Twelve thirty. Say twelve thirty.
Twelve thirty.
Twelve thirty. I'll second it. There's another motion in a second to go back into executive session for 10 more minutes. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell. Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
We're in executive session. Okay, Cedric County Commission is back in session from executive session. Mr. Papoun.
No binding action was taken in executive session, Mr. Chairman, but I believe we might have a motion to consider.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that we authorize settlement in the case of Christopher Welch versus Board of County Commissioners, Sheriff Jeff Easter and Cody Alexander for $50,000 and authorize the chairman to sign a release. Sheriff Jeff Easter, and Cody Alexander for $50,000 and authorize the chairman to sign a release.
Second.
Been motion and second. Any comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Being no other business, we will stand adjourned.